Welcome, this is the meeting of the Sherburne Select Board of Thursday, March 20. We are going to begin with an executive session at 6:30 PM. We have currently Jeff Waldron, Paul DeRancis, Marion Neutra, and myself, Stephen Tsai are present. Eric Johnson is not present, he's recused himself from the executive session item. So if we could begin by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. Tonight, we only have one executive session, and it is for strategy session, to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining union employee pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A and 2 for the DPW director.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion with regards to the executive session agenda?
A move to approve the executive session amendment agenda.
Second. Great. And can we, I guess we'll do a roll call vote for everything today, just because Jeff is on remote. So we'll do a roll call vote. Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. And I do declare that an executive session is necessary for the purpose indicated by the Assistant Town Administrator. So I move to enter into executive session.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, let's take a vote on that. Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Could you stop the recording? Welcome back. This is the Sherburne Select Board meeting of Thursday, March 20. We have exited executive session and re-entered public session. I'm hoping that Eric will be back here soon to take over for me. We can
They're doing a great job.
We can, let's, let's wait a bit for Marion to come back and for Okay, yeah, let's wait for everyone to get in before we read the agenda. So all I've done is reopened public session. We haven't read the agenda yet, I was waiting for everyone to filter. But I was gonna use my computer, otherwise I could be co-host, but it's just Jeff that might make it easier. This is March 20, 2025. Welcome to the open session portion of the Sherburne Select Board meeting. And now please ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the select board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have not had any requests tonight or proper comments. Items can be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the continuation of the hearing from the January 9th, January 23rd, and February 26, 2025 Select Board meeting regarding the cable license hearing on the renewal of cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Item number two is the consideration of appointments. Sherburne Arts Council Bethany Napoli for a term to expire March 20, 2028. She's a new appointment. Metropolitan Area Planning Council is a reappointment. Marion Neutra, Alternative Representative for a term to expire June 15, 2028. I'm sorry. Consideration of acceptance of a donation and a grant from the Sherburne Fire and Rescue. Item number four is the FY26 state budget earmark request. Item number five is a review
Wait, did you skip item three?
I said, did I say consider, um, consideration of acceptance of a donation and a grant from the Sherburne Fire and Rescue.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm on the wrong agenda. I'm on the wrong agenda, sorry.
Item number four is the FY26 state budget earmark request. Item five is the review and update of Pine Hill School age back replacement project. Item number six is the review and update of the draft FY26 omnibus budget. Item number seven is the review of the proposed FY26 capital improvement plan and a discussion not limited to the items below, which is the DPW roadway management and proposed 202025 roadwork, Jameson Field tennis pickleball courts and fencing recreation. Is he a, he's gonna be online for that, I think. Laurel Fields robotic field mowers, which is for recreation. Computer-aided mass appraisal system replacement for the assessors. Sherburne History Center and Museum. Item number eight is a review of the 2025 annual town meeting warrant articles, including opening and closing warrant. Item number nine is the consideration of the 2025 ballot questions for town election. Under the consent agenda is the TA waiver warrant, draft minutes of February 26 and February 2020, 2025. Ratify a one-day liquor license for March 19th and to grant the following liquor license. April 16, 2025, May 21st, 2025, June 18th, 2025 for the Lions Club, and Qualy's Bounce for a liquor license for April 15, 2025 for trivia night for friends of the Sherburne Library. Item number 11 is select board updates, and item number 12 is TA updates. I want to kindly request that the select board consider amending the agenda to remove the draft minutes of February 6th and February 20th to a further meeting date.
Understood.
I also have a suggested change.
Go ahead, Paul.
Under item three, state budget earmark request.
Yep.
I wonder if we could expand
That's actually item four.
Item four, thank you. I'm working off the old agenda. I want to propose expanding that to include not just the state budget earmark request, but also federal earmark requests, because we've been asked by our congressman to address earmarks from a different government. And that's not covered by this agenda item, and doesn't otherwise fit within any other agenda item here.
Nope, that makes sense to me. Any other amendments? Are we okay with the proposed amendments as is? Any motions relative to set amended agenda?
Move the agenda as amended.
Okay, move up, Paul. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do roll calls since we have one person here. Roll call, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay, moving forward, agenda item number one, which I'm kind of on the old agenda, so I think that's consideration. You got a new one? I have it on my phone, but it turns off all the time. Did you line up my numbers?
No.
We have too much fun here. Oh yeah, item number one, my favorite one. Cable license hearing regarding renewal of cable television Comcast. I already read this day agenda, and we're not prepared to do it, so I'm not gonna read the thing again. This was already continued, I think it was on February 6th it was. I believe we are not, the presenter is not prepared for that. So I guess, what's the recommended movement date to?
I believe the 17th?
Yes.
17th, that's April 17th? Of April?
April.
2025?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say May 29th, we haven't just done it. But, okay. We got April 17th. All right.
So can I move that we open the hearing and extend the hearing to April 17th?
Okay. Do that to go through the process, actually do the full opening, movement to open and so on and so forth like that. Well, it's never closed, right? That's right. Yeah, still open. All right, so we have a motion here to continue to April 17th. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. April 17th, make it seven o'clock. Why not? PM. All right, consideration appointments. We have the Sherburne Arts Council, Bethany Napoli. For term to expire March 20th.
Can she see?
Oh.
Hi.
Right in. Me too. Do you want to say anything, or if just?
Well, whatever you might need from me to consider that application I've put in, I'm happy to introduce myself and tell you why I think I'd be a good fit, and take any questions you might have, but quickly, my name is Bethany Napoli. I live in Sherburne. I've lived here for three years with my husband and my two kids. My older son is a sophomore at DS High. My younger son is a seventh grader at Middle School. And I'm interested in getting more involved in town. I've been here for three years, like I said, and just haven't had a chance to do that quite yet. So this is a great way to do it, especially with something that I feel really comfortable with. So I was a ballet dancer when I was young, and have been involved in the arts for my whole life. I, after, I danced for ages and ages, and then I went to Villanova, and I got my undergrad degree, and got my master's degree, and I worked for about 25 years in the field of HR in companies. And I left, worked for General Electric for about 20 years, left as the chief HR officer for one of our businesses when I got sold, and then started my own consulting business. And now I do consulting for HR kind of stuff. And I'm a fitness instructor, and I work with someone you all may know, Sandra Burke, who has a company in town called Dance Fit. So I'm an instructor at her studio, and I'd love to get more help, so.
She's on the trustees, right? Library trustees?
Friends of the
Depends on the library, that's right. Before I say anything else, you know, with an HR background, do we have any openings on the personnel board? We'll find another role that you're very comfortable with, I'm sure, so. My joke is, I say all the time, is that this town's basically run by 30 people, or something like that, who just repetitively go throughout this. This is my 17th year in some committee of some kind or another like this.
So can I make a motion?
Go, Paul.
So I move that we appoint Bethany Napoli to the Sherburne Arts Council for a term to expire March 20, 2028.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Thank you very much. We will be in touch.
I joined my first committee. Bethany, I joined my first committee in my third year as a resident here, and now look where I am. This is my 11th year in Sherburne, yeah.
Well, thanks for having me. With that, I think I'll get the room and go take care of my kids for the evening.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks for having me, Bethany.
Yes, absolutely.
Now we're gonna lose one-third of our audience.
Next up, Metropolitan Area Planning Council reappointment. Marion, is Marion in the audience? Oh. Wanted to do this. Yeah. Yes, go ahead, Paul.
I move that we reappoint Marion Neutra, Alternative Representative, for a term to expire June 15, 2028 to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Very good. Okay, moving on. Considerance of donation and grant Sherburne Fire and Rescue. Before Paul moves, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just real quick, we're asking you to accept a grant for a number of items that are listed in your packet, and also a really generous donation to the fire department. And just another word on the donation, it's really great. This donation also helped the local business.
Okay.
Really thankful for that, and I was looking for a motion for a motion for that.
Oh, fire site, that's excellent. Yeah, very nice. Love that business. Yes, Paul, please?
So can I make a motion to accept a donation in the form of two $500 gift cards?
So? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
Okay, I am aye as well.
It's also a grant.
Oh yeah, the grants as well. Sorry, I missed that there. Paul, do you want to make a motion relative to the grant?
Yes. We move that we accept a grant of $12,500 from the Massachusetts Barbed-to-Fire Services, and that the funds be expended in accordance with the grant.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, consideration of, oh no, wait, I'm sorry. My three is not your three. Okay, I really do have to change my little flags here. And then before, FY26 state and federal budget earmark requests. All right, now we met before, there was some consensus, I felt that for the state requests at least, maybe it was the federal, that we wanted to kind of focus on the historical center and museum, and that's in that revised table here. I'll open up to more discussion. One of my thoughts is that we ask for more than $100,000, that's on here. You know, especially if we limit other requests. That's at least my point of, my initial thought. Any other thoughts on this, on these earmarks?
I agree with you about increasing the $100,000.
Yeah.
You know, let's aim high and let them cut it back. Let's not cut ourselves back.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe someone here has a better sense of the amounts that they're amenable to, but I would say as high as you think would be seen as credible. And then let them cut it back, which they probably will, but let's aim high.
I mean, at least two, because two sounds realistic. That's my sense, you know what I mean? Maybe three or four seems like, might get nothing out of it, or it just seems like a little unrealistic, but two might be a thought, see, I don't have fun. That sounds good.
Yeah, 250. Or, you know, one
$1,000 per year, let the
No, one negotiating tactic is to put in a very specific amount, like 247 and, you know, 50 cents or something.
And it goes to something.
Because it gives the impression that that's exactly what you need. But, no, I would say 250.
250, and then would we say that minimum useful funding is 100?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Is there a danger in making the minimum too high?
Like, what, if we made it like 150, 250, 150?
Would they, well
Would that risk?
I mean, what are we, didn't you say that sort of the maybe five-year-ish trend is that we've been getting around 75,000 per year on average?
50 to 75.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to ask for twice as much as we have been getting for each of the past five years, I think, is. Or, I wouldn't want to set the minimum as twice that, because then, I don't know, if I were the one making the decision of what things to put into an earmark. You know, if I was like, okay, well, a township in Sherburne size is gonna get 75,000, and this project says, well, minimum useful is 150, so 75 is not gonna be useful, let's not fund that one.
Sorry, proposing 75,000.
That's, well, that's the strategy, right? Is should we
Representative Orenita Rosa is asking for this form to be filled out, but obviously, in addition to this, we'll have some verbal conversation.
Yeah.
Would certainly suggest that you all as well to help drum up support and give those verbal conversations. You could give a little bit more nuance than we do with this form.
Yeah.
I would like to acknowledge Jeff, I feel as his hand raised, if that's okay, just because, you know, I always encourage people to use a raise on YouTube.
I know, I'm kind of a pain in the ass being remote.
Oh, that's why I'm, I'm gonna recognize you.
So here's the thing that I think we need to do. See, this also has nothing in the description box. So what I think will enhance our chance of getting this earmark approved is if we say that the town, whatever's currently on the warrant, I think it's $600,000 they're targeting, say that the town is gonna pay $600,000 for the museum. The museum is gonna get philanthropic funding, and it, maybe it's a little bit lower if we increase our earmark. So it shows that we're not asking them to pay for the whole museum, that we're contributing town money, and they're supplementing that.
Yeah.
And so I think it paints a better perspective that we've put some skin in the game, and they've put some philanthropic skin in the game, and we'd like to have the state also have some skin in the game.
I think George had a comment.
I just wanted to comment that I happened to have an opportunity to speak with somebody who's very high up this weekend with the Mass Cultural Council. And I spent a good deal of time chatting with her about the museum and our needs, and she had a lot of good advice in terms of prospective sources of funding, which we want to follow up on. We did bring up the earmarks, and she said that you shouldn't be shy about what you ask for, especially this year. That there is more money in the till this year that is geared towards something. If you can tie in what we're doing with the fact that this is the 250th anniversary of the United States, and that, which is what we intend to do, that it really puts you in pretty good stead to get more money than you might ordinarily expect to get. And I said something like, well, I think we need 400,000. And she said, well, ask for 400,000, which I thought seemed a bit much, but because I do think you have to show that we're getting funding from other sources as well. But she essentially was saying that this is a good year to be asking. I think we're just, I frankly think it's really coincidental that this is a year when we know we need it for the museum, and we understand that there is more money than would ordinarily be available to us through the state, through these earmarks. So in making your argument, I think that that would be important.
Does the board think that 400 seem like it might risk, you know, I don't know enough about it?
I don't know enough about it, but it makes me nervous, just because it is so, I mean, it's, you know, it's orders of magnitude more than we typically get.
Sure, but what you, the indication to me was, wasn't, yes, you'll get 400, no, you won't get 400, and all likelihood it would be cut, but that there would still be some, some contribution made.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea that in the description, we should list the, you know, total estimated project cost and indicate, you know, amount of money that has already been raised, and then indicate additional amount of money that the town is intending, you know, to fund itself by borrowing. You know, additional amount of money that the town's historical society plans to attempt to raise, and then, you know, you can see that delta, basically. And essentially say that we're asking, we're asking the state for as much of that gap as they are willing to give us.
Yes, I like that idea a lot, what you and Jeff just said, absolutely, by showing that we're putting the stuff even more than what we're asking for. I like that idea a real lot. Just to me, it's all about the number. It's like, you know, and I still know enough. Is there any way you can have a conversation with DeRosa, see if like, if like
Yeah, I'm not sure what, you know, this is all coming about because his office has a meeting with the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee of the House on April 3rd. So he's trying to get all the information from his constituents towns prior to that, and probably at that meeting, he's gonna get some direction from, from the Chair about how much is available.
Okay. Just also side.
Coincidentally, the 250 number is, you know, is similar to your campaign, the 250 by 250.
All right, that's fun. I mean, I would almost be willing to leave it loose between 250 and 4, depending on the vibe that you get from DeRosa, perhaps, you know what I mean? If he gets some vibe from it. I don't know if we have, what's the board think? Do we want to set a number? Or set a range, like between 250 and 4, and leave it up to the town administrator to use discretion? Well, they need a number, but do you mean to vote on a number? Like, what I'm suggesting is Jeremy will use his discretion. Pick a number between the two based on his conversations with the, with DeRosa, to see what the tolerance is.
Well, I would certainly support the 250. I would love to get the 400, but the 250 is
What about if we did this?
A good shot at getting it.
What about if we made the amount be 300,000 and raised the minimum to 150,000, exactly half of the amount we're asking for?
The only problem is three times what we normally get, so as long as they don't choke on it. Because of what George Fisk was saying, that, you know, the cultural council there, whatever, in Massachusetts, but I don't know how much they chime in on the earmarks. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
I think it's more from their experience. The other comment that was made is, we know we're gonna get, we're gonna be meeting with James or Orenita DeRosa, but it's also just as important to be meeting with Becca Roush.
Yeah.
I've already reached out to Becca.
Okay, good. No, she certainly has more experience. James seems a bit more engaged with this community, to be honest with you, but Rebecca has more experience, you know, with the actual legislature itself.
Yeah, James has four towns, and Becca has 11.
I know, I see her during the elections.
Jeremy, in your write-up to James, obviously you're gonna write a blurb. I've been kind of fishing among the historical folks for ammunition for that. And it seems to me that one could put some good examples in there of stuff that it's really important to preserve. We have documents from the 1600s that are really rare, and they need to be preserved. So not just history in general is great, but, you know, some specific examples of what's
In this initial submission, they're looking for two to three sentences.
Oh, okay.
As follow-up information, and through those conversations directly with their office, we'll be sure to fill the details.
I'm gonna recommend, for a second, we'll go on here, or whatever, that we do 300, 100, but give Jeremy some latitude. And if he wants, he can call me, or whatever, whatever, that if he gets a vibe, that more could be accepted, and they're not gonna choke on it, that we simply give him some latitude to request more, but not less. Does that make any sense?
That makes sense, but Jeremy, you have a comment.
Another question for you. So currently, there are three in the draft that was in your packet, there are three items in priority. Would you like to just include the one item to accentuate that?
It's hard for me to knock off Farm Pond access, leaving out the ones
Right, I think that's a really important one.
I would include all three in the priority list as presented.
I agree, but the Council on Aging statement, I haven't heard anything specific. So it needs to be a lot more specific than that. Oh, yeah?
Okay, I mean, it's third priority, but it wouldn't surprise me, it's so small, they do it just to say they gave us something that's on the downside, but whatever.
I just don't want that to take away from the top line item.
Yeah, I think that's not the highest priority.
Yeah, I mean
Say it as a senior, okay?
I mean, to me, it's like, what happens if the Council on Aging doesn't get that? You know, or we put it in next year.
It's third priority, so they probably won't, you know what I mean? The only, the only thing I can see, and I don't know the psychology behind this, as I said, is that it's so small, they might say, well, we'll give them that, that way we gave them something, and it fits in. We just want to give them 60 anyway, or 50, right between the two.
I'd rather not include that, for that reason.
What were the final numbers? Are we gonna vote on that? I didn't hit
The third one down, the Council on Aging, the third priority, some concern that's small enough that it might actually distract from the others. So they might simply say, well, we'll give them this one, because it's small, and we can give it to them, the one that's 60, 40.
The last two have independent grounds for support in the legislature. They do a lot of funding for seniors. And the Farm Pond, when we acquired Farm Pond, there was a commitment that they would help us with funding the maintenance of the pond. So both, both of those have independent bases for support.
But they're drawing from the same pool of money, right?
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Sean has a comment.
Yeah, oh, Sean, yeah, go ahead.
Are you thinking of asking for 100 for Farm Pond?
No, 250.
250?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 100 was a minimum for the library. 100 is gonna be 300 asked, 100 minimum useful. Because it's two numbers. What you're asking for, what's the minimum useful? Yeah, so right now it's 250 both for Farm Pond. Do you think Farm Pond could get away with less if we wanted to? Otherwise, it might choke on 250 as a minimum, give nothing.
Maybe, but I was choking on 100. I thought, I thought you were asking, I know we can't vote for 100.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Let me ask you, is there, so 250, if that's our dream ask, what do you think the minimum useful is for Farm Pond? Do you know what I mean? I didn't even think about it.
I don't know, we don't have a clear estimate
Yeah.
that I could venture that guess. And there's no other funding for that, that's wrong. If we knew we had, well, I mean, we'd be setting ourselves up for having to fund something we don't have appropriation for.
Yeah, so if it's minimum useful, if you can't use 150, then don't put it on. If 150 is gonna sit there, we won't put that on there. Right now, it just says 250, 250. My gut tells me, given that we usually get 100 or less, they might not give you anything, you know what I mean? Where I will say with the library, with the history, we could use 100. It'll actually go toward it. You know, it will actually still do the work, because we're also putting in 600 here, and donations there, that'll actually will add up to something.
Agreed. Three would be great. 100 would be good.
I mean, I guess I could see an argument here to be made, then, that we should, since we are top lining the History Center, and we're asking for a lot of money for it, and then our number two item is at minimum $250,000. I mean, there's no chance that they're gonna give us $250,000 for Farm Pond, in addition to some smaller number for the
It depends on how they're grading it. I mean, there's different criteria that we don't know. Well, we may not get a vote, but one might fit in a bucket that's, that's got extra capacity, that somebody wants to put project in it, it happens to be one or the other, you don't know. That somebody wants to put project in it, it happens to be one or the other, you don't know. It might be our priority, but you know, someone on one of the committees might say, really, you don't want this. And we get it.
That's the point I was making, the last two have their individual commitments that transcend time and year and and the total amount available.
The subject matter is a very diverse history. I guess maybe leave it as is.
Okay.
Leave it as is with the, what did it go, three hundred, one hundred, three hundred, one hundred, two fifty, two fifty, sixty, forty?
Yes, but with Jeremy having latitude to increase the ask.
Yeah, particularly the History Center, absolutely. All right, um, so talk to me about the federal, because I'm not as up on that one.
So this is a good place to do what what George was talking about. It's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States. Actually, Commonwealth of Massachusetts is older in many ways than the United States. But in any event, uh, the United States has more money.
How about now?
And I think this should go to the History Museum. So that's where I would put a big request in. They wanted four hundred thousand, they needed four hundred thousand. Split our request for four hundred thousand?
I'm fine with that, the federal earmark, absolutely. I mean, it might be a little shoot with the stars, but it is a different caliber there, no question about it. It's the uh, side of things, especially US history.
It's more likely to get success than if you went in for four hundred dollars. I mean, Congress is used to billions and coming in with a small little thing, kind of like, oh.
No, I'm good with that.
Why don't we say four hundred thousand and a minimum of a hundred thousand for the History Center?
Now, now we've moved on to for federal uh, earmark requests. So as a totally separate request, to put in a request of four hundred thousand dollars for for federal funding.
But we're asking for the three hundred thousand, one hundred thousand for the state.
Correct, yep. So we're going to ask for all three earmarks in the order that they're shown. And in the amounts that they're shown, we accept for historic centers, three hundred, one hundred. That's the only change there, I think. Now on to the federal, Paul's recommended, and I'm inclined to go with him, to request just a straight four hundred from the federal um, federal earmark.
And there, I think you could emphasize the fact that uh, in sixteen fifty-two, when this town was founded, uh, we were on the frontier, and we have documents from that period.
Yes, the point that we made, we we requested a earmark last year from the Congressman. And the point that we made with the Congressman is still valid, that the history of the United States is made up of the history that occurred primarily on the East Coast two hundred and fifty years ago. And where are these places that the history is located? They're located in places like this museum in Sherburne. And part of preserving that museum is preserving the history of the United States. That's why people and taxpayers in California and Alaska should be paying into the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to preserve the history of this part of the country.
So do we want to um, do just um, the library of federal requests? Or you also want to try a Farm Pond there? Or is how does that, how does that work in federal requests? I'm not as familiar with that. Just ask, just go straight for the library at four hundred?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't do the Farm Pond because A, it's not a federal issue as this is. And B, we do have a commitment from the General Court that we're in a bucket. As part of our acquiring that pond, they were going to provide support to us. So this, a sense of obligation there on the state level, but again, why would a taxpayer in California want to pay for Farm Pond?
Maybe we should rename it, like I said before. All right, I'm I'm good with just asking for the uh, for the History Center. So if I don't, I'd four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
Should we vote on this, or we just got a good consensus?
You could vote.
Yeah, because I don't want to hold hard to the other one, give you some flexibility there.
We should vote. I think we should vote, is that what you're saying?
We're saying we don't need to vote, that we have, Jeremy has enough information to move forward to what we have, that's not a solid thing. Especially if we want to give a little bit of flexibility, that it may be better not to vote. Um, so if he, if he finds that he can ask for more, or for maybe less helps our our competitive nature, that we can give him some flexibility when speaking with the representatives. It doesn't need a vote, let's put it that way. I think he hears our.
Okay, all right, all right.
He hears our message, yeah. Okay, now moving forward.
I think it's worth mentioning that uh, the fact that Select Board is uh, supporting efforts to get both state and federal funding through earmarks. And the, maybe not the amounts that we're going to get because we have no idea, but just that fact could make a difference at town meeting. To, and you know, I know that the people presenting this at town meeting will take advantage of that, but they should.
Absolutely.
Well, in the report from the two hundred and fifty by two hundred and fifty campaign, they say that they had expectations that the Board of Select would support some earmarks. And I'm proud to say we met their expectations.
Dragging this on unnecessarily, I just want to comment that we actually were founded in sixteen seventy-four, not sixteen fifty-two. Sixteen fifty-two is settled, which has always kind of bothered me, and I think we should remove that from our, from our seal.
Oh, yes, that's right. I didn't say that we were formed in sixteen seventy-four, I know those dates.
It's more subject matter, I've always think that's settled should take out of it, because we were settled like in five thousand B.C. We weren't settled in like sixteen, you know?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, it's pretty.
It's very uh, one-sided thing, that they were settled in sixteen fifty-two.
Yeah, eccentric.
Yep, okay, all right, moving on. Old four, new five, uh, review and update Pine Hill School HVAC replacement project. Is there a presentation?
Um, I did no presentation, but an update.
Okay.
So just wanted to give an update. Please recall, there was an appropriation at town meeting this past spring, starting two thousand twenty-four, of three hundred thousand dollars. And the school department contributed or earmarked, set aside a hundred thousand dollars in addition to that to fund adding some H-track to three areas of the Pine Hill Elementary School. So they had identified four hundred thousand dollars in funding. Since town meeting, um, design has been advanced and completed. Uh, it's been advertised for construction and and put out to bid. CES, which is a mechanical electrical plumbing building expert, systems engineer, put together the design and the bid specs. The bid opening was this past Tuesday, uh, March eighteenth. The, the project was advertised with a base bid, uh, which was for the H-track in the library area. Alternate one uh, in the, in the bid was for the cafeteria area, and alternate two was to add the auditorium area.
Okay.
Three bids have been received, the apparent low bidder, uh, which is still under review by the engineer, but uh, from the bid opening, they seem to meet all qualifications as of now.
High start construction.
Any reference checks? Uh, the base bid came in at four hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight. Alternative one came in at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four. And alternate two came in at five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-four. Now, there's two areas, two of those three areas that are identified as the most needed or highest priority. That being the base bid of the library and alternative one, cafeteria.
Okay.
So to enter into a contract with a base and the alternate one would cost seven hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two, which is in excess of the four hundred thousand dollars that was identified for funding. Um, in some discussions with the the school department, the schools may be able to identify an additional two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in funding. But that still leaves a shortfall of about seventy-five thousand dollars.
May extend a real open earmark discussion.
Uh, there's, and uh, so there'd be, there's about, there's thirty days that the bid stays open, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. So there's a decision to be made whether to help identify some supplemental funding to revisit this entirely at a later date.
I mean, if it's, if it's only sixty grand, not only, I hate to marginalize this. I mean, if it, if we rebid, it's going to go up, not down. You know, who knows what's going to happen with supplies with the, you know, political stuff coming up right now? I mean, if we got to find sixty grand, I'd be willing to try to find options to find that sixty grand. What do other people think?
I mean, yeah, it's about, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I mean, it's a, this is a tough, this is a tough spot for me. Um, you know, because I'm, I'm really the person who kind of championed this to begin with, I think. Um, and I do think that it's important, but it coming in at effectively, we'll call it twice uh, the cost that we um, had originally thought it would be. And it's not twice the cost for the same project, it's twice the cost for only two out of the three areas. So originally, it was four hundred thousand dollars for all three areas, you know, which was already something of a compromise because it was like, well, there's no way we're doing the classrooms, because like, all the classrooms are going to be well in excess of a million dollars just for the classrooms, and we're like, there's no way. And so we're like, well, let's do this smaller thing, and it'll be these three areas, and they're kind of like the, you know, targeted areas where, you know, there's groups of children are collecting, and they can use them on hot days for various things. So now we're only getting two out of those three, and it's costing twice as much. Um, it's um, that's, it's tough, you know? Especially within the context of the broader conversation of what is going on with the Pine Hill, the building to begin with, right? Because I think we all understand that that building needs to be either replaced or renovated sometime in the next decade, fifteen years or so. And so then the question, you know, even when last year we were talking about this project, it's kind of like the, okay, well, where does this HVAC project fit into the, you know, the conversation about the building itself? You know, would a renovation project uh, continue to utilize this equipment? Or would that all ultimately get scrapped in a renovation? Obviously, if it was a a new construction, it would, it would all get scrapped. But it's, I don't know, it's uh, there's so many moving parts, you know? And at the same time, for me, a lot of the calculus was, well, if we're looking at ten to fifteen years before there's a new building, I mean, that's up to three full cohorts of elementary school kids that are going to go through Pine Hill with no air conditioning.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, the earth is just getting hotter and hotter during that time. So to me, it feels like an urgent need to get some kind of air conditioning into that building. But now suddenly, this project is twice as much for two-thirds as uh, of the, of the, um, of the cooling. And it's just like, that's a big, that's a big price tag.
Uh, Jeremy, then Sean.
Yeah, you wanted to add just a little timing as well. You do have time to consider this and have this come back in your next meeting. You know, that that would be within that thirty day window, so April third, you could, you could digest this, you know, come up with more questions and then rediscuss this or continue the discussion on April third, just so you don't feel rushed in your decision.
Uh, Sean?
To make that more complicated, what Stephen was just saying, the, in my opinion, the the most important piece, and also one of the consultants' opinions, one of the most important pieces of HVAC in that school is the auditorium. Stephen, you've been to plenty of all-school meetings, you recognize how unhealthy that is, there's no airflow in a building in one room with four or five hundred people in it. That, second alternate was going to fix that. So if we come up with two hundred thousand, we still didn't fix the single biggest priority in that school. It's not just the heat, it's unhealthy air, so that would still need to be addressed. Whether it gets cooling, maybe not, but they're still going to have to spend substantial amount of money to get that end up and running again.
So can I?
Yeah, Paul?
Why not just leave it up to the voters? This would be a dead exclusion or put it on the ballot and leave it up to the voters.
I definitely want advisors to chime in. I definitely want that, to look at the bonding and do projections and that were coming out there. Um, I'd want advisors' input on that, because we're asking for a fair amount this year. You know, we might want to defer a couple items, to be honest with you, so.
Because just from my perspective, I've had decades of dealing with Sherburne doing projects in a way that always leaves something dangling. They built Woodhaven for senior citizens with no elevators, so people had to go upstairs with Karen walking back. They build a school with no air conditioning, so that people swelter. It's because they want to save that last final few dollars, but this, this concept of trying to save a penny, you lose a pound.
What was the value of all three of them put together?
About one point three million.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that auditorium itself was around four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, for the lowest, apparent low bidder, the alternative to five hundred and fifty.
Oh, five hundred, oh my god.
The school department does think that they can, they can do some, some renovations to get some air circulation, at least during the warmer periods of the year. The reason it's sort of locked off now is that during the winter, there's no, the heating doesn't work in that air exchanger.
Right, so it's locked off during the cold, cool season, and no getting for air in that.
That's easy, how's the, how's the April third agenda look right now?
There isn't a lot on it right now.
And last thing I'll ask is, for real, even though I, you know, I know George was saying for the earmarks, for federal earmarks, would this be a consideration? That would, that would go into next fiscal, fiscal season, which is like in November, right?
Yes.
For the federal earmark?
The fiscal year.
What's that?
The federal fiscal year is October one.
October, yeah, all right.
So you probably have two decisions to be made, if you will. One is to, to, do you try to enter into this bid contract, which has a sort of a thirty day window of bids? If you do, then you have to identify funding. If not, then the next step is, what, what, what do you do next? Do you go back to town meeting to get funding for it and rebid the project?
And if we just simply um, do the two options, like we said, I I don't see the one point three, I don't know. If we just do the two options, um, we'd probably need like a seventy-five thousand dollar transfer or something.
Yeah, reserve fund.
Reserve fund. What's, what's reserve fund at right now?
We could cover that and then requires a trip supervisor, right?
Yeah. They're meeting like every day this time of year, yeah.
I was just going to add a little bit of extra color, which is, of course, the schools, right, would be covering a significant chunk of this, uh, finding various funds. And when they did that a year ago, when there was the cost overruns on the rooftop units, that caused a bit of a kerfuffle. So even though they have the funds and can identify them, it's still, of course, money that came from the taxpayers. So just flagging that, that, you know, that would be, I think, a point of.
I do think part of the funding, though, was actually grant money that was for um, food and cafeteria related expenses, I believe. And I think they're deciding that essentially, the HVAC for the cafeteria qualifies. I don't think that that's the full chunk that they found, but you know, I think it was six figures of it at least.
They, you know, last year used EMD and a transfer from their capital account to cover that cost overrun.
Yeah.
And they presented it, oh, we found the money, this isn't going to cost the towns anything.
Yeah.
That didn't go over so well with a number of folks.
Yeah, from whatever municipal department was that the additional source of funding would be that it's a revolving account or some, some additional funds in a special revenue account for cafeteria and the kitchen area that could be applied. And they may be able to use some of their rental revenue, you know, how they pay rent space in a, in a, that would be how they.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't believe that they're taking money out of the region's budget, right? I think they're finding money that is appropriately sort of, uh, pineless.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I was just suggesting that.
Yeah.
The, the finding extra money.
Yeah, yeah.
Creates, can create, can create some sensitivity.
It's great, obviously, it's not the same thing, but I was actually going to ask that if it's operational funds, if operational, I bet you'll just find a way to spend it anyway. That's kind of my sense of things. How many bidders was there, do you know, Hannah?
Three.
Okay.
And all came in relatively.
Well, did we type, so they're good numbers. If we rebid, it's only going to go up.
Yeah.
And then we certainly can pull a town, we've got some to hold, to see how long they could hold a bid, but I don't think they're going to, went to town meeting, probably have to rebid, probably get higher numbers. Put it on for April third, unless anyone objects. My inclination is. My inclination is to go with the two zones, um, with a, with a, with a transfer. But that's just my, maybe I change your mind in a couple of weeks, whatever other people think.
Do we know, would it, would it even be feasible to say, alright, let's enter in a contract for the two zones? And, but we'll put in a federal earmark request for the third for five hundred and fifty thousand? And if that comes through, that we would then add that onto, onto the contract?
You go back and add all that.
Everyone with a test. Large to add, you know, bid alternatives needs to be entered into for the rebid.
And I don't know if, it's not like modular, it's not like you put in so many, you can't have to build it all at once type of thing. I don't know about this stuff.
Play the three separate zones, yeah.
But like the, the units on top, we couldn't like add a unit just for the gym? Or whatever it is.
I think it would be a unit that would be dedicated to the auditorium.
Overall, it's like the center of buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The library and auditorium are basically art center.
Is the auditorium the gym or is that like thirty years?
Art center, the old gym.
Okay.
They carpeted it while I was there, that was nice.
Really? That was only a few years after me. I still, I still did the gym at the community center when I was down here. Um.
So you're talking about putting this decision off. Um, what more information are we going to get?
I mean, I'm inclined to support a reserve fund transfer, we still have to defer, we still should go to advisory. Advisory needs to chime in on a, um, reserve, reserve fund transfer. I'm inclined to do the two zones with reserve fund transfer. Um, the, still maybe do a federal request, it won't be the five seventy-five, it's gonna be more than that, or whatever the hell number was. Um, it's gonna be more than that amount of money, but maybe you kind of come up with a number, there's still HVAC, the um, the auditorium.
I see. So then if that comes through, we then put that, that project separately out to bid?
We need a whole separate thing. Go out to bid seven hundred thousand, whatever, it's gonna be. What's that?
It's already designed, it'd be quick.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm inclined to do. If you think we can vote on it now, we can vote to do it, to go to advisory or whatever it is. Um, I don't, what would the process say? I still gotta go to advisory. We, could we vote, like pending advisory's approval, or she has wait till advisory comes back? And we do have time to do April third, we do have time to do that, cause the thirty, you have to hold the numbers for thirty days, not including weekends and holidays, is that what it is? Yeah.
Not including that.
Yeah, not including, so it's actually forty-five or more.
I will say, I think Dan would probably need, I think Dan would probably need to call a, a special advisory meeting, right? Cause usually after the public hearing, we all just hibernate for a couple of months. I say we as if I'm still on there, but you know.
Sticking at the end of bloody Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna add a Saturday to the agenda.
Yeah. We'll put that at the very beginning of, uh, the public hearing.
So again, I guess someone advised me, can we vote now and say pending, um, advisory's uh, approval and just have it go through?
Yeah, it's for preference.
Okay, um, that's my recommendation, if someone's willing to make a motion to approve the two zones at the, what was the number?
Base and alternate one.
Yeah, base and alternate one. Um, with the necessary, it's called seventy-five thousand or anything, or whatever's necessary, under a hundred thousand, maybe perhaps, to um, to add a reserve, reserve fund transfer pending advisory's, um, concurrence.
So.
Alright, uh, do I have a second?
Second, I'll second that. What was the dollar amount, though?
The transfer, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Transfer amount from reserve fund?
Seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second Paul's motion.
Alright, let's make it solid seventy-five, forget what I said, let's make it just all seventy-five. Um, okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Very good, we have a nice thin April third agenda. You're gonna miss me.
I certainly am.
Okay, um, next up is the budget, the FY twenty-six budget. Um, is there any presentation or any, like, spreadsheets?
No, I've included a background presentation, just for your reference in your, your packet.
Yep.
I wasn't planning on going through that, I just wanted to make sure that you had that available in advance of Saturday's advisory public hearings. You saw what the roll up of all the town budgets look like. Uh, so you have, you know, a summary presentation and also have the budget model.
Okay.
Um, some high points that I'll just mention and then feel free to ask questions. Uh, overall, um, as presented, the draft FY twenty-six budget shows an overall town line budget increase of three point five percent over FY twenty-five. Um, that includes funding school, town government, uh, other un, un, uh, undistributed expenses of the entire operating budget. And to offset that expense, it would be funded by property taxes, local receipts and state aid. The current draft would increase property taxes on average, uh, for the average home by three point three eight percent. Um, as presented, this draft substantially slows the trend of reducing excess levy capacity. That, that graph we've been looking at of, uh, the excess levy capacity year over year. Um, if you see in the summary slide or the summary in your, in your background material, that slope has, has flattened substantially. Um, so kudos to the budget makers and advisory. Um, Deb did a calculation or summed up, um, the progress from submitted budgets to where they sit now. Um, and overall, that was about a hundred thousand dollars for, in a reduction in the budget request through the advisory committee process. So, uh, the budget model, in summary, uh, if, assuming there was a five percent increase in property valuations for FY twenty-six, this budget would result in a tax rate that would drop by about seventeen cents per thousand to be about sixteen point four one per thousand.
Where does five percent come in compared to what the trend has been for the past couple of years?
Slightly lower.
Okay.
It's a lower estimate, conservative estimate.
Yeah, cause I think the real estate market here at least is definitely.
It's pretty hot, it's likely to come in hot at five percent.
And then do we know, there's a new growth number here, two hundred and forty thousand? Do we know how that was arrived at and?
Through your average.
Okay.
Uh, Jeremy, can I ask a very general question and I don't mean to throw a wrench in the works, but this is kind of the elephant in the room. What, is, is there an alternate strategy? Um, if we, if federal funding is lost, for example, special ed funding for the schools is lost. Has, have the schools got a kind of fallback budget? Take, taking that into account, or is it, am I, am I?
If, if there is no quote fallback budget in that, um, kind of the double edged sword of Sherburne's finances is that state aid is a relatively small percentage of your budget. That includes state aid for school checkers, seventy as well. That represents, you know, what was it, about two and a half percent of your budget?
Right, so it's not that big a hit.
Relatively small impact to your budget.
Okay.
I mean, on the flip side is that most of your expenses are offset by property taxes importantly.
Yeah. So, yeah.
The risk is relative, is smaller than many other communities.
Good, I think you've said that before, I needed to be reminded.
The budgets have not been presented, presented with a, an alternate type budget, they presented just like our readers.
Alright, um, I'll make a little bit of a free for all people, I, I know I like to recognize people, but then having specific questions for Jeremy or specific questions about this budget as presented before you, I mean, the big picture, I certainly like it, you know, in the big picture. I still wish there was, I know we had, we moved a few things to free cash, we put some stuff in the operation budget for stormwater, I'm pleased with that. I still wish it was some non-bonded, uh, or non-exempt bonding, but I've just gotta pick my battles in life. Um, I guess, yeah, are there any, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? What we see before you, and then if, while you're thinking about that, and I ask this every year for the last seven years. So should we vote on this to support this or not? Not just ones under the selectmen, but this includes everything, right? Do we vote to support this as a whole before we go this Saturday before them? Should we do that? I know one year we voted everything, we don't wanna do that, we're trying to get every single thing voted, but as a budget as a whole.
I think we should.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable for us to vote the, the entire budget. I don't, I don't believe that there were any individual departmental budgets that we as a select board have issue with, right?
Definitely, you do get better presentations on bloody Sunday, you know what I mean? You do actually get the individuals coming up and ask questions and stuff like that.
Always change our mind.
You know what I mean, but.
But in the meantime, we should, as the, as the head of the executive branch of this government, we should stand behind a budget.
Yeah, and I know it is a little different, once it fall underneath us, the support is different unless we vote on like Board of Health. You know what I mean? Board of Health is independent, independent board and uh, uh, I guess we've, you know, we've, we've often in the past done each one, had them come before us and um, voted on each one that comes underneath us and asked questions and voted as a whole. I will say this year, I do like it better, cause Jeremy has taken far more ownership. Where before, not mentioning some other people who were in this position, didn't, and so we had just individual like volunteers coming before us and I never kind of liked that. So first of all, thank you very much for that, Jeremy.
Yeah.
For taking ownership and taking such knowledge, over the, over the last several weeks or months, I've, a lot of us have asked you very specific questions, you've managed to answer them and been right, so I'm actually very impressed by that.
Can I ask a clarifying question, though, Eric?
Yeah, very good.
I, I think we could vote on the operating budget, but I think we should maybe vote on the capital budget in the advisory hearing, cause they often have a presentation related to the project.
Sure, we're about to see, so the next agenda item is the overall warrant, which includes the capital and Sean's here to present on the roadway. I, I think we should vote on, well, we've already voted on some of the capital items, correct? We actually already have voted on some.
Most.
Yeah, there was three lingering, I think, and Sean's is one of them, which he's here to present. So I'd like to kind of continue what we were doing there. Like Paul said, is that if we change, when you see the detailed presentation on something, we change our mind, we can always do that. But Sean's here, I'd like to see the presentation, I'd like to give that either endorsement or not.
I would agree on roadway, but not on some of the other capital projects.
Alright, well, we'll talk, that's the next agenda item, so we'll hit that.
Trying to clarify what, what we were deciding now, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so as far as this operational budget as a whole, um, any, any specific details, but any items, any thoughts as a whole? Any motions relative to this operational budget? Yes, Paul?
Move to support it at the advisory hearing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. So moving on, to old number six, new number seven. You're never gonna get old. Um, review of proposed FY twenty-six capital improvement plan, discussion not limited to, thank you, Simon, the items below. And these are items of which we, um, we did not vote on before.
And are highlighted.
So do you wanna simply open up, as I indicated? Is there any overall questions or comments relative to not specific with this capital budget? If not, I'm gonna probably turn over to Sean, who has a presentation about the roadway, which was something we had, um, put off voting on before.
I guess, I have, I don't know if this counts as a general or a specific question, but are we aware of any of these items specifically that are being, uh, removed? Um, prior, well, I suppose prior to Saturday, but certainly prior to the town meeting.
Yes, so I, I believe you voted on all but five of the capital projects. Um, one of those five has been removed by the recreation team. They've withdrawn robotic field mowers, so you can cross that off your list.
Bye bye.
And in, in discussions with the director of assessing, um, you can also remove the cam on the, the computer rated massive removal system.
Bye bye.
That wasn't the non-bonded, or that was the free cash ones?
That was free cash.
Both of those were free cash.
So, I mean, I don't know if you wanna talk about the other one, but I, I would prefer to vote on the pickleball courts and the history museum concurrent with advisory public hearing. The reason I feel that way is because I want the select board's support for the, I understand that advisory is somewhat divided. I, I wanna have our vote for the history center be in the advisory public hearing. Not just us reporting a number that we voted tonight.
So the one thing about that, and this is just my personal belief, so it's not even, this isn't even procedural. I tend to support the history, I, I, I expect to support the history museum. I'd like to go to advisory with a supporting vote. So do you think, like, could we vote first then? Do you know what I mean? I, I would like to actually go to advisory, cause I don't think advisory is unanimous on that.
Yeah.
I suspect it was.
I agree with Eric, I, I think, I think, to me, it would be more of a message for us to show up having already voted and supported the number that's being requested. You know, I think if they had come in with a request of eight hundred thousand, then I would probably have a little bit more trouble, um, with that request. But at six hundred thousand, that's probably less than what I would have, um, um, supported anyways. So I, I would rather go in there saying that the select board has hopefully unanimously supported this request at six hundred thousand. Um, because.
I think it's stronger for us to have that vote in the advisory hearing.
Let me ask the chair, so advisory, are we going, is a select board gonna vote for, I get, that's just gonna be a handful of items that we haven't voted on by the time we go to advisory. It's better than zero, uh, or it's better than all of them, well, what have we done in the past, you know what I mean? So we're doing our homework reasonably well. Do you think we'll be allowed to vote first, or how do you think that procedure will go?
So the typical procedure would be that you would vote in the second public comment period, which would be after, you know, so it'd be a public comment period, presentation by the department, a public comment period, advisory discussion, second public comment period, and then, you know, advisory voting session. So typically, select board would vote in that second public comment period. That's not written down anywhere, so you know, certainly could switch that.
Will that be right before you vote?
Yeah.
It would be that.
And that's what.
Be asking for their vote or they should vote.
That's right, that's right, and, and I would just flag that I think, um, you know, it's, I, I'm not at all certain that, you know, there's gonna be majority support on advisory for them, so.
That's the vibe I get.
Be prepared for that.
So.
So, Marion, was it?
Oh, so, so, uh, what's against our voting now to support it? And in the public comment period at the advisory meeting, standing up and saying, the select board has voted to support this request. That would be okay, right?
That would be fine.
I shouldn't think that would be a stronger.
Well, I think Jeff's point is that if we vote at the public hearing, then during that time period when we vote, we would also have our own little select board discussion, which would mostly be probably all five of us voicing our support for it and then subsequently voting. Um.
We can still do that without that.
Right.
And it takes some time on the advisory for them to like stop their meeting and listen to us.
Yeah.
So if we spend an hour talking about this, that's an hour delay. And so we know where we, I, I support this.
We all do.
I don't need to, 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 to listen to all of you tell me why you support it, because you've already said that to me in the past, number one. Number two, I'm in agreement with everybody, but I think we're all in agreement with you, so.
Would help with advisory hurt us all support? I think that's the argument being made here, whatever. I'm not looking to extend the meeting.
Yeah.
If we vote now, I will make a few comments about it, about like the reduced price, the value, the donations, the earmark or whatever else before advisory votes on it. Anyway, I'm certainly willing to give those few sentences on it if we vote now, um, at the public hearing.
Along, along those lines, I was just gonna suggest that any of you who wanted to speak during that public comment period, of course, could do that and offer
That's true.
perspective views, you know, I will try to not have people repeat things, so probably wouldn't be great if five of you wanted to say the same thing.
I can guarantee we won't.
Uh, you know, just, I, I'm thinking about the, getting the meeting done within a day. But if people had things to bring and comments to make from the select board to highlight reasons for your support, that would be completely fine and appropriate.
That's not what I'm saying, though.
Okay.
I would for, be willing to discuss it tonight, but I won't vote tonight, I'll abstain. Cause I think we need to show our vote to the public.
Alright, well, I don't wanna go with a four, four oh one. Um, I'm inclined to defer the vote. Any other objections on the board here?
How about a, a, a preliminary vote, just to see where the board stands, how about that?
I think we all know, is anyone here not gonna support it?
So, so what's against us going to advisory and making a, a public statement?
Yeah.
The select board, uh, supports this, the consensus of the select board, forget about the vote, is to, is that we support it. And if advisory comes back to select board with, with advisory members have questions for us, why did you, you know, support this? Then we have answers.
I'm honestly fine either way, I'd like to vote now, but if Paul's not gonna, I'm, I'm.
I'd like to vote now.
Jeff.
If Jeff, if Jeff's gonna abstain, I, I, I don't wanna go with a four oh one, that's all. So honestly, uh, you gotta commit.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm proposing a vote now, I'm proposing a preliminary.
I just don't know how useful it'll be, I, I think we kind of did that just now, I think we did that right now.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna move.
Communication thing, I know I'm being a pain in the ass, but it's a communications thing for us to have the vote when everyone in person and on Zoom hears us vote. I think it's a very strong communication thing of, of support.
But at the advisory meeting, uh, is there space for, I mean, will advisory ask for a vote of the select board at the advisory? Not necessarily, you will?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, during the second, second day.
Okay.
Marion, there was one year we went there, we voted every single thing.
Yeah, I hated that. I freaking hated that.
I'm only proposing it for one, Stephen.
It makes it hard for advisory, and, and in particular for me managing that meeting, to get it done in a day. The more things there are that different, different committees or boards need to, uh, you know, have a mini meeting within the public hearing. There's certainly space, if this is one where I feel it's important to do that, there's certainly space to do that.
And I will say also, and I don't know if the current advisory committee has the same mentality, but when I was on advisory, I mostly ignored whatever the select board had to say. And in fact, if the select board and the advisory committee were somewhat at odds, the more vociferously that the select board supported something, the more I was inclined to actually oppose it. So I don't know if the current advisory committee thinks that way, but that is certainly my, that was my mentality when I was on advisory. So us getting up there, yeah, right? So us basically, uh, pushing into his meeting and taking it over, being like, we're the select board and we're gonna talk about how much we like this thing.
But we have a much better select board now than with Europe.
Yeah.
I share, by the way.
I propose, I propose that we let Dan decide how best to manage this at advisory.
Yeah.
He can ask for our vote, he can not ask for our vote.
I'll certainly ask for your vote. If you haven't voted, then, then you should do that. You should do that in the meeting. It's just.
Okay.
You know, it's a really long war and I'm.
Yeah.
I'm hoping not to have to continue, like, to continue the meeting after, after Saturday to a second day.
I'll give one last plea to Jeff. So Jeff, as I think about this, it may backfire, not just what Stephen said here, but it's gonna, it's gonna be kind of obvious we're doing this for political purposes versus like, usually if we vote at, at the, um, at the advisory hearing, my goal if we vote, that's for one of two reasons. Either one, we haven't made up our mind, or two, we want to see a presentation. That is something I will say, some of these ones, we might actually go to vote advisory, because if we haven't seen this, like, um, I don't know, one of the tennis courts or something like that. Sounds like they're gonna come to you with a real presentation. I was kind of planning on voting on that then, because I want to kind of see the presentation. It might be different. The numbers are always in flux. That makes sense to vote at advisory, because.
And the school's turf field, like, we have not seen a presentation on that at all.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's like something where I'm like, I currently lack enough information to make, um, you know, uh, an informed vote on it. Whereas I've got all the information I need for the Sherburne History Center, like.
Yeah.
I'm voting to support it.
Jeff, I'm gonna plead to you, if we vote tonight for the Sherburne History Center, so I think the vote then might backfire, because there's no actual reason to do it. It might be bad optics in front of advisory.
Well, I think it's gonna look bad when advisory votes it down, and so we wouldn't have anything to counter that.
We certainly can make statements when, uh, at the second pub, portion of the public comment period. Dan will go to us and we can make statements why we support it, and I think that's.
And, and, and of course, report your vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna say we voted five zero to support it, and we'll talk about how they reduce this, the scope quite a bit, how we're obligated to do this under the, um, the donation from Dose a hundred years ago.
I mean, I'm already strategically composing my rebuttals for what I believe are going to be the points that various advisory members are going to make in opposition to this. And I certainly intend to, uh, to, to speak those, uh, during the, the public comment sections, you know.
So all this presupposes that we have taken a vote before the advisory meeting. And.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can do that tonight.
Steve would be speaking much stronger on all the points that he's making, if he could speak on behalf of all of us than if you're speaking just, um, on yourself.
I agree.
Uh, but when would, typically, they just ask the, the select board what their vote was. They don't ask for a comment, so.
Yeah, but we're, we're welcome to comment during both of the public comments.
No, I know, but.
And we will, we will comment, that's my point, we will.
And we'll be commenting from our table, you know, at the side of the hearing instead of at the front. We're not gonna be in the audience, so I think everybody will know that this is a select board member who is, um, speaking.
All right.
So Dan, you will ask us, what, how did the select board vote us? Okay.
Yeah. And I'll report it, and I'll actually give my own commentary before I report it myself, or me, whatever. I'll report it, I'll report our thoughts with it, that is unanimous and blah, 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 blah. And then you'll have a right to speak as well, because it's public comment. Everyone can speak, as long as it's not too redundant.
And you will have heard the advisory discussion and the concerns, which will be raised by a significant number of members of the committee.
So they love worse if we.
I'm changing my mind, Eric.
Thank you, Jeff.
That was the point I was gonna make, it's gonna be a lot worse if you.
Make motion, Paul.
Just make the motion.
Move to, to support, uh, the, uh, library space.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
What's that? And, yeah, so he moves to support the capital request for six hundred thousand dollars for the, um.
Yeah, cause it says library space fit out Sherburne History Center.
A motion and a second. Um, on favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
That helps if we also have a strategy on, on Saturday as well. Okay, so all that being said, um.
Just one more comment, basically, towards advisory. We always have the right to, at town meeting, to move. Not to accept advisory committee's recommendations and to make a floor fight out of it. If we care enough about this, and we may care enough about it. So when advisory is considering its views on this stuff, and I'm speaking as a former member of advisory, one of the things that your colleagues should be thinking about is, do you really want to present to the voters of the town, to the major boards taking completely different positions? And what the implications of that might be for town meeting.
So we've discussed that. I am very sympathetic to the view you're expressing. I don't think all the other members of the committee are sympathetic to that view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it has happened. I mean, it was the, um, what is it? The stretch code for the building code? The advisory recommended against it and town meeting voted for it, and there's been a few times that that's happened. I don't know, what do we have, maybe one, one at town meeting? Maybe less, I don't know, something like that. It, it does happen.
I think historically the vote, it's like ninety-seven percent of the time, uh, town meeting supports advisory's recommendation, but three percent's not, that's.
Yeah.
The surplus equipment account. You were chair.
That's a number.
It's the benefit of having it at my house. Cause I was at the garage.
That's right, that was, that was the best one.
Did that one go through in the garage?
Yeah.
I remember I was up.
I went through, but it didn't go through.
All right, all right, moving on. Um, Sean, are you ready? Do you wanna?
I'm ready. I didn't know I was really making a formal presentation, so.
Well, there was, there was on the agenda before, and you can take it to whatever extent you want, so I think we're gonna support this, but it was, uh, there was two items. There was one, you just presenting a road thing, and then there was the capital, and I thought that kind of merged them together.
Well, exactly. I was initially coming, uh, for your blessing on some projects, because it's time to do that. It happens to coincide with also, uh, as I was writing it up, Jeremy and Diana, like, well, you're, you're gonna come talk about the roadways anyway.
It does go ahead.
I didn't realize that happened.
It does make sense.
So it, it does play together. Well, it's, in the combination of funds that we have, uh, as you guys are aware, we're always, we're at the, you know, construction season. Doesn't really line up with fiscal, I think, uh, so.
I think it's based on schools.
We, we're always in this where we have this year's fiscal, it looks like last year's fiscal, it's this year's fiscal, you have the ninety money we get to spend right now. And we need also some town meeting money to supplement that. The, I don't think we should bore ourselves with going through the entire pavement management. We did another assessment this year, which you guys know.
We all have it.
Exactly, so it, it shows a target we should be trying to hit. We get it, if we're, if we're not continuously hitting that, and we haven't been, we see where the roads start to head, and then they cost a fortune to turn the corner.
And it's been a tough winter, and it's not just here, here in Framingham. I think it's because we had that real world wet slush and then a freeze afterwards. Stuff's popping up everywhere.
Yeah.
We had a couple of freeze thaw's, which are unusual. There was a wet and then a sudden freeze. There's more potholes than I can remember in years.
Yeah, you, you know what we lost? We lost all our cul-de-sacs.
Oh, really?
Like, every one of them's destroyed. The plows ripped some of them off, some of them were already destroyed. Usually don't go in and pave a cul-de-sac. We might actually have to do that with some of them. I think that's kind of the curse.
Grill pavement, yeah.
After a couple of layers of chip seal, cul-de-sac gets the worst wear on a, on a neighborhood road.
It's always turning.
Too many Amazon drivers going around.
It is.
So the, the number was, was higher, uh, previously, and then we, we kind of tallied up and, uh, you know, kind of based on the capital plan this year. Me and Jeremy met a couple of times, so we, we kind of set it at three fifty. That aligns with a handful of projects we really need to do, uh, which is kind of the second half of where I'm going. So I, I'd like to just jump into that. Right now, what we want to do is get started on, uh, some full rebuilds. I mean, you recognize this reclaim. Reclaim is when you come in, you basically grind the road, you rototill the road, basically. They, they regrade it and start over. Most of our roads haven't had that. They, they, they went from gravel to something and they've just been, you know, paved over with chip seal over. So some of the neighborhoods are really, really, really shabby. Wildwood Road, most people don't ever go up there. That's one road since the day I started, I've had longtime residents, just. Not harassing, but, you know, they've been begging, so it, it's far beyond time. Bear Hill Road, as you know, if you know the map, Bear Hill gets you into that neighborhood. The whole neighborhood has to come in Bear Hill or, or the far end of Harrington Ridge. So it gets a lot of wear. It's really in bad shape. These roads have never been repaved since they were built. They've only had chip seal on them, and, and only two coats in their whole lives.
Yeah.
Nineties and only two thousand, tenish.
Olden sixty-seventies.
Yeah, Barry's, Bear Hill was, yeah, Barry was early, because before Harrington Ridge got finished. I don't remember what year Wildwood was built. So right out of the gate, the contractors are ready to start that, basically, almost now, like April.
So do we have the six hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred? Is that?
In it.
Gonna be.
Well, we, we will have it. If you look down at the bottom, we have fair share amendment. That's in the bank here. For whatever fiscal reason, the, the state sent that money to us. We have the, the chapter ninety money that's in the account currently, and the allotment that's coming, uh, that may or may not actually get a bump. They're, they're toying around with a bigger bump, but that's what's coming, and then obviously the town meeting. Your commitment tonight would be a notice to proceed, so we can schedule it. It certainly doesn't bill out all at once. They do kind of half the work. And then the other half, but it allows me to start doing some, you know, fair amount of work I have to do with the, you know, in the chapter ninety system in Grant Central to get all the paperwork done for the project.
So if I understand the sheet, if I, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
If you have a sheet here that says six hundred and eighty-six thousand to rebuild the three roads, Wildwood, Bear, Hill, Harrington Ridge. And then you have Millenor Valley, the following streets, Washington Street, Woodland Street. And then you have the, a series of numbers, and the numbers include, uh, four items, which total one million, one twenty-one, eight fifty-two.
Yeah.
If I take the two numbers from the top of the page, six eighty-six and four forty-six, and add those together, do they equal the one million, one twenty-one?
They're ten thousand, sure.
So that's ten thousand less.
So if nothing changed, I gotta, I can come up with ten thousand dollars.
So you need ten thousand more, or you're gonna have a surplus of ten thousand?
I would theoretically need ten thousand.
To do all.
Again, that's if none of the anticipated numbers change or none of the quotes change.
Don't we have FY twenty-five chapter ninety money left, or are you spending that and just on other stuff?
That's what's in the, that's what's in the balance.
Three sixty-four, oh six five.
Correct.
Where is it?
Three sixty-four.
That's chapter ninety and the, uh.
Oh, okay.
And the, uh.
So the last question, yeah, I mean essentially, yes.
Yes.
This proposal is covered in expense and revenue.
What I'm not asking for is the second half, because that, we can't authorize that without, I have to have the town meeting money to be able to do that second half.
So I guess the second thing tonight would be your support of the three hundred and fifty thousand for the requested.
Right.
So why do you need our vote to proceed with the project?
We've always done a select board vote to do roads.
Okay.
Especially major.
In theory, I don't, I mean, in other towns, I don't think Jeremy did that in Natick, especially with the chapter ninety roads.
He did, and we presented a multi-year, uh, roadway improvement plan, which the select board did endorse. Always subject to funding and other things.
I think it's historically, it has been a vote specifically on chapter ninety. Remember, we used to not allocate any town funds, it was always this chapter ninety.
Yeah.
So I think that's been the trigger a lot of times, because it's just that.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I move to allow the town administrator issue a notice to proceed, and the director to begin the chapter ninety paperwork approval for reclaim and rebuild the following roadways. Wildwood, Bear Hill Road, Harrington Ridge Road between Bear Hill Road and Wildwood Drive.
All right, do I second on that?
Second.
I'll amend pending our approval, FY twenty-six, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but okay.
No, you don't need that. That's for the second half.
Oh.
That's for the bottom of the page.
I'll come back for that.
Is the four forty.
He's already got enough funding for the.
Okay.
For the, uh, rebuild.
He's got.
Why am I struggling with this all?
At the top, and you want to start now.
That sounds good enough.
Seen your slide.
So, so is motion. I second.
Okay, motion and second. On favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
I am, I as well.
So, jumping back, I wouldn't even be able to do those other two roads if we didn't, you know, we need that three fifty to even do that. In theory, if nothing else changes with state funding, that means we can't do anything in the next spring. If a culvert collapses, we're coming back for a reserve fund. All the stormwater assets right now that are probably collapsing, there's some that I know of, that's gonna have to come out of the budget. There's no, you know, this will tap out the money. And there's, I think next year, we're gonna just come back to town meeting with a strict guardrail number. Cause I, if we had more money in this, we would, we would be fixing some guardrails with this excess money.
Wasn't there a town meeting resolution to make it all core ten?
It wasn't. It's gonna be a tough sell right now. I, we're doing almost all core ten right now, except for really hazardous locations like Scottsdale, but.
I know, the one on, uh.
We're replacing stuff that otherwise would still be good in Galway.
Western Ave screams every time I drive by it. All right, um, okay, all being said, so do you want to talk about the, the Sierra? I mean, I think it's self-evident, especially Woodsland Street, I drive on it every day, and you can tell it's, it's, it's coming apart, but I'll leave it up to.
Well, we'll completely lose the road if we let go.
Oh, I know, I definitely.
And it's, and it's a, you know, it's a high traffic area, just, and Washington Street's the same way, we, it's, Washington Street's even worse when that opens up. One, it's hit an age where you go all the way down to the base.
Yeah.
So cars, you know, we'll have four or five cars in a row losing tires if, if, you know, one of those rainy nights. And it's, you know, it's, it's really hazardous to go out there and work. It's not like filling potholes in a, in a neighborhood where you don't need cops with you.
And they're both straight Millenor, like, footprints jobs, okay.
Yeah, Washington still, still has a pretty good base, the way it was built. Woodland is, you know, it's close. If we, if we chose not to do it, we'd definitely be rebuilding that section.
Yeah, no, I definitely.
That was one of those sections that got a really thin overlay and it didn't hold up.
All right, any, uh, questions about this?
Is, is roadway capital one of those things that we wanted to target to bring into the levy limit instead of excluded debt? Or is that just not a battle that you want to have anymore?
It was. I mean, they, they reduce some, and you put the stormwater in the operating, which I guess gets it, gets you somewhere there. On the long run, I personally believe that it should be, because it's more consistent every single year. So like, I know Jeff talks about how like, it spreads out to use over the, over the different years, but it kind of doesn't matter if you ask them for more or less the same every year. It effectively becomes an operational expense, one you can spend past years or whatever else, because you're.
So you're talking about bringing it into the operational budget, though?
Operational, or taking it out, taking it out of the levy limits, either one. Well, operational or taking it out, taking it out of the levy limits, either one per se, because essentially to make it kind of impact more the operational budget by keeping the um. Debt service in the operational, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I would like to make it, what do you call it, not bonded at all, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But either way, at this point, I'm not picking a battle. I think they listened to some of the things I was saying and I'll listen, you know, vote my pen from now on. You know, but yeah, I mean, I'm just giving that speech again, so everyone keeps hearing it that, you know, even if it does go up slightly over the years, that's almost inflationary. It's a very consistent request. It's a consistent thing. It makes it, you know, exempting debt that you wouldn't have to otherwise, but. But I'm living with it this year.
But it's a capital asset is the issue.
I know, I I just, I gave you, I didn't mean to cut you off. I I actually said your speed, because you talk about how you you do it for ten years, people who do it for ten years, but it. Now you got me going and I'll let you talk after this, but it doesn't matter because you gotta view it, to view it the way I'm viewing it. It is, the roadway network is the capital asset and we're essentially doing like little capital things which act like maintenance on it throughout. And that's why it's a consistent expense every single year. That's it's a capital infrastructure as a whole, you know what I mean? So it it's semantics, but if you take the strict definition, yeah, it's capital, it's not maintenance, but it's kind of maintenance on the whole. If you look at it philosophically that way, or stop expending mon, stop, stop bonding anything, stop expending money on it, then it actually truly. Well, whatever. I'll let you talk, Jeff, but you know, we've had discussion like thirty times.
Well, I know, but you you may not be on the select board much longer, so we kind of get one more in, I think.
That's so true. Hey, Jeremy?
Yeah, uh just a little detail on how how difficult it is to bring within a levy limit. From the presentation earlier, you have about seven hundred thousand dollars excess levy capacity. If you were to fund, you know, say move this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be. A capital stabilization fund that's funded from the operating budget, you would lose half of your excess levy capacity.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, that's if we don't bond it, right?
That's if you don't bond.
But if we bond it and we just pulled the debt service under the levy limit, it's a smaller chunk.
It's a smaller chunk.
Yeah.
Had you done it ten years ago, your levy capacity would have been higher.
But if you bond it for one year, you're gonna bond it the next year and the next year and the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, you know, you're bonding, you're bonding for a six year, you know, it's gonna take you six years to get up to that actual debt.
Yeah.
And that was kind of a goal. And that was kind of one of my goals, you take a little bit off each and every year. And here you trimmed it anyway, do you know what I mean? But you take a little bit off each and every year and you put a knot on, then you eventually, you you adapt around it. Essentially, you tighten your belt elsewhere. Because you look at, we're under Prop two and a half, but you said our levy's going up by three point eight percent or something like that. I know some of those other things, but a lot of that really is due to the. This, you know, levy um or debt service being exempt.
What's interesting when you look at, looking at a sustainable program where it takes a number of years to get to that limit. Um when you factor in the interest, it's less expensive to just raise the cash from your levy instead of borrowing to gain the debt service.
It also helps a guy like me plan knowing there's a fixed number. Because the years you don't spend are the ones that cost a lot of money, because then you spend twice as much during the year from it. And that's what we did, right? We broke that cycle. Every ten years, million bucks every ten years. And now that million is too, but.
But in in my opinion, these are great conversations to have, um sort of in the lead up to your next budget cycle.
Oh, we tried to have that. And for the record, we did start this conversation in the fall, I do want to say. And that's, like I said, make that. Dan will take my legacy on for next year.
Dan's taking notes right now.
Yeah, exactly. All right, any question comments relative to this uh Millenoverly of uh Washington Street and Western Ave, uh Woodland Street?
Wait, man, the three fifty was one that you had not yet voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be a raising five.
No, no way.
Uh I move to support the capital request of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for roadway management uh in the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, on favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff? Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well. So do we still need to vote on Washington and Woodland?
No, please don't.
Okay.
We'll we'll come back to that.
Okay, that was, okay, okay. All right, so we have two items here remaining on the capital thing, which um, yeah, I think people know my thoughts on them. We have Jameson Field, tennis pickleball. And we have the turf field and track. I'll just reexpress what I'd said earlier. I think since there is apparently a presentation being given on Saturday about those. And they have been in flux a fair amount and I've given my opinion on the track about, you know, going out to bid, that um. I suggest those are two of the few we actually leave to remaining to vote um on Saturday. What are other people's thoughts?
Well, I agree on the issue of the the uh heat baths. And the artificial turf field is something. But I think we need to have a presentation here, what happens at advisory and all that kind of stuff.
Any thoughts on, Paul, suppose you're talking about the track field, any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree. We we just, I know so little about it that it would be unethical of me to vote on it tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've I've heard the presentation and I do have an opinion, but uh I want to hear more opinions.
Yep, absolutely. How about the um, the uh, what do you call it, the tennis courts?
Tennis courts.
That's been in flux, I go, Jeremy?
Earlier this week, Capital Budget Committee um voted no action on that particular course.
Yeah, but um Dan, are they coming with a presentation on Saturday? The uh.
I think so.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent.
But it has been in flux. There are various options out there between, you do this uh surface, you do the whole thing type of thing. And we haven't really seen much of that, correct? At all in this here?
I mean, I'm I'm sort of torn on this whole thing. Uh I am pretty sure that I am not going to support it. You know, even though I did support it last year. And the reasons that I am probably not going to support it have very little to do uh directly with the need for the project. Or the projects as proposed. I just, I am assuming that advisory is going to bring up many of the same. Uh issues when they discuss it tomorrow and I don't, I don't know that it's necessary for me to add to that discussion. So I just, my point being, it is something that I would be very comfortable voting on tonight because I already know that I'm gonna vote no. Um and again, to not prolong um the discussion tomorrow by essentially saying what I already know I'm going to say, you know.
Is there any in that presentation that would change your mind?
No, no.
This is Jameson Field.
The, no, the tennis tennis.
Tennis court.
Yeah.
I've invited folks to do a presentation. I'm not certain what's gonna happen.
Okay, maybe a lack thereof might help solidify our vote as well. Uh what are other people's thoughts? Seems like Steve and I are, I say vote Saturday, Stephen say vote now. What are other people's thoughts about the subject in general? Not just voting, but about the whole thing.
I, well, I have one, if I could, if I could.
Yeah.
Clarification, which is, I wonder if we should separate tennis courts from the pickleball courts because. I'm not sure I want to spend the money on pickleball courts, although there are a lot of people who play pickleball, but I'm concerned that the. Courts themselves have become very degraded and so it may be more expensive if we don't. Use some work on the tennis courts now. It might make a much bigger project. Uh I'm not sure if that's factually true, but. I'm not sure if we need to have them bundled together.
Isn't what else, you know, isn't just, isn't this converting one of the tennis courts to a pickleball?
Correct me in a minute, it's converting the the backboard.
Yeah, the practice.
Backboard is to a pickleball court. And then um putting the backboard in the back of one of the existing tennis tennis courts, you know, and then redoing.
Okay.
Tennis court. So Dave, you can correct everything I misstated.
Yeah, Dave Walsh, I see your hands raised. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um I do plan on making a presentation uh on Saturday uh with respect to. With this, I think that. You know, even the Recreation Commission understands uh, you know, the position of advisory and capital budget and actually agrees. Um with a lot of their concerns. Um so there's not like a lack of awareness in terms of. Um you know, what the overall concerns are beyond, you know, whether this is a good project or not. However, we feel like. Kind of tying back a little bit to what Jeff was just saying that. Even if it doesn't go through this year, we feel like we have an obligation to the public to share what's going on with the condition of the facility and make a recommendation. So that if it doesn't go through this year or it's not supported this year, there's some sort of continuity of what we're gonna be asking for in the subsequent year.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, Dan?
Dave, this is Dan, second in the audience where you probably can't see me. Do do you have a a number at this point for of the various proposals that were presented at capital budget? Which you are inclined to present as a proposal on Saturday at the advisory hearing and what the number. What the dollar asked for that would be, because I think it's different than the five hundred and seventy that's shown currently in the warrant.
You you are correct and 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 some and some of that is directly in response to. The the way the conversation went at capital budget as well as um some of the, you know, feedback uh from Sean Colleen and others that. Have experience with asphalt related projects. And also how it would be bonded based on the um length of expected service. So the number that we're gonna go in, Dan, with is the five forty. Which is looking to redo uh the tennis portion of it. The Recreation Commission's thought was. The the pickleball court is probably, it it makes sense to do it at the same time ultimately if you're gonna be doing. You know, pickleball courts in in the long run, but the cost of materials have gone up and if we go in there asking for both the pickleball court. As well as the tennis courts, it's actually a higher number than what we originally asked for when we originally submitted the capital budget request. So the number that we're gonna go in with, Dan, just to um tidy that off, is gonna be the five forty number. Uh that was on what we shared with that capital budget, which would exclude the pickleball courts.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Dave? In the in the past, we used to have, I think, an outside group that ran a summer camp. At the tennis courts in town and we got some revenue from them for uh use in the summer when their. Many residents were on Nantucket or Martha's Vineyard or somewhere, so they weren't, you know, and it was usually during the day. Is that still the case?
So Sherman Recreation runs a program every summer for as long as I can remember. My kids participated in this program when they were growing up, which was.
Mine too, yeah. Yeah.
Decades ago at this point, but the um. It's a, it's a, it's a Sherman Recreation Program. It runs for five weeks. During those five weeks, every, which is Tuesday, it's a three-day program, Tuesday to Thursday. After the day program concludes, there's an afternoon segment where we have tennis lessons that are offered. And so after the kids have lunch, they're walked down there by the counselors uh to the tennis courts. And you have over the course of the program, um upwards of a hundred plus kids. Uh registered for tennis over the course of the summer. And we just opened up in the past two weeks, um you know, registration for both spring and summer programs. The test is always the first thing that fills out. We already have a waiting list in the spring for for tennis and all, and we will, as we usually have. A waiting list for tennis, you know, when we do the summer programs and we get a lot more use obviously beyond that, but that's just, is an indication that. It's highly utilized, it's approaching a state disrepair. Our objective is whether it's supported or not, it's just to provide an update. And say this is what it would take to get it done.
Well, my point is, if it's bad enough that that may disappear, we might lose the revenue that those. Uh families pay to, for the tennis lessons that they're getting. So if it gets deteriorated, they may ultimately. Send their kids to tennis lessons somewhere else. So. We could actually hurt ourselves by not making them at least be uh uh. Not substandard, but adequate condition to support the program, because we get some revenue, I think, for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, not to shoot, not to not to argue against my own project, I mean, the the that revenue in and of itself, most of that goes to pay the instructor who. Is is providing the lessons, which is.
Yeah.
Um what a lot of recreation programs do. I'd like to, I'd love to tell you that that, you know, revenue is significant to the operations of Sherman Recreation, but the the reality of it. It is not, the the more important to me though.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, mostly with programs, but more importantly to me is is the risk of not having a facility. If we need to, you know, close it in part or in whole, and then you're waiting twelve to eighteen months to get that resolved. That's 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 the concern for the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
So bringing back to the board here a bit on um, I'll just state, write it simple. I think we have right now, um Steve and I are. Different thoughts. What are people's thoughts on voting now versus voting on Saturday?
Are we, uh. Yeah, I I want to hear their presentation too. Um the the original total proposal also includes some ADA access paths. And uh uh a stand for snacks and um what else, lights? That were gonna be redone. Have have those been parsed out into segments that we could?
I mean, I can, I can, I can respond to that quickly if you'd like. The. There is an ADA component to this, um you you know, in terms of a, the the walkway approaching the courts. Um and approaching the concession stand, not to rebuild the concession stand, but just so that people have. Uh an accessible point of egress between the road and the parking lot to um, you know, that part of the. Jameson facility, which would be the courts and then the um the concession building that's there. So that's, that's the extent. You know, of the of the ADA portion of the project.
All right, um I think I'll be in the presentation probably on Saturday as well. It sounds like, it sounds like we want to wait and vote and have further discussion on Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess.
Is that kind of what I'm hearing here? I just want to make sure, because like we have a fair amount more more this meeting to go. Do you have any more specific questions, Marion? I don't want.
No.
Shut you off, but.
No, not good.
We have a fair amount of meeting here to go and it does sound like, you know, we're gonna see a presentation that'll actually either answer our questions or generate more questions as well.
Right.
All right, so, so it sounds like those are two capital items we'll discuss on Saturday. So, Dan, we cut that down. Not out. Um I think that's it for the capital. Um moving on then, our next agenda item.
Dan says agenda.
Okay, yeah, Dan?
I think we've already voted all this.
Yeah.
Only the highlighted things were not voted.
And technically, that would come up the next agenda item number eight, if you want to bring up anything. Number eight, we're discussing, we had three um warrant items we had not voted on yet. I believe at eight, I think one's gonna be removed, but frankly, if you want to talk about anything else, we can. I would prefer if we stay focused on those that we haven't voted on yet. But nonetheless.
Dan's trying to derail you though.
Yeah, good.
I I just wondered if you might want to circle back to talking about the longing for spending limits.
Oh, that'd also be on number eight.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And number eight is a general warrant. So we did the budget, we did the bonded capital items on number seven. Uh number eight is the, you might be number seven in yours. Yeah, Jeremy?
I'm, you started on uh in item eight for warrant.
I think we're in agenda item number eight, yeah, let's call it that.
Let me just give you a brief overview and just help with your conversation.
Yep.
Um the the warrant article checklist is in your package. Uh all those that are highlighted in yellow, you have yet to make a position on. Uh so that, that's on your agenda this evening. Consider that as positions. Um you also um should open the warrant. As the Board of Assessors has withdrawn the warrant article for the personal property tax exemption, so that should be removed. And we've also um been advised, we should have a separate warrant article for the regional school capital. Um so as part, when you open, uh well, you should also add an item to um. The one more specifically for the regional school capital item, the turf track and field. It's not, you know, the the general capital is its own.
Oh, it's a standalone, it's a standalone.
As a standalone warrant article, yeah.
What, what's the reason for that?
It's the way that it's traditionally been done. Um and the warrant article also notes the interagency agreement.
Oh.
That gets put in place for that.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, let's let's start with that one. And I will note that three of these um highlight items we did address under capital, so I think we have at least. Five others, something like that.
So I have that article about veterans' benefits I want to bring up again.
Okay, well, let's let's open the war. Let's make this a, a, right now, open, we'll have discussions and then we can vote, do you include things, exclude things, or whatever else. So any motions to open the war? And a second?
Second.
On favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Uh Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And uh Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Okay, I do want to take this um, just add some structure to this, at least in order. I'm gonna go down the highlighted. We did vote on the budget, more or less. We voted on the, at least resolved these three capital items that are right here.
Yeah.
It's nice to check this off. Uh well, I'm just gonna go down this list and then we'll talk about things that aren't on then. Robotic mowers.
Wait, but didn't we say robotic mowers is being removed?
Yeah, but we addressed it. So the the R and D yellow doesn't count. So the R and D yellow doesn't count anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, mass appraisal system replacement. Is that the one, Jeremy, you were saying that you want to remove? Okay, any motions relative to remove this item off the warrant?
Which article is it?
It looks like it's Article 10 under the computer-aided mass appraisal system replacement. The assessor is requesting to remove that off the warrant, the proposer.
Yeah, I see that. But we're not doing the robotic mowers or that's being withdrawn?
That's also being withdrawn.
I'm sorry if I didn't clarify that before in the capital, that's being withdrawn by the proposer.
Okay.
Yeah. So actually, I don't think we need to vote on the, the computer-aided appraisal system, right? Because it's
Being withdrawn too, right?
It's all, it's being withdrawn and it's like a, it's a capital item below the line, right?
Also, it doesn't need to actually be removed?
Yeah.
Very good, look at that.
Look at that. Good butt, Eric.
All right, so it looks like item 11 or Article 11, regional schools, regional school capital expense, turf, track, and field fencing. Oh, that's what we said we could discuss.
We're deferring that.
This is awesome. Okay.
Regional schools, I will put that on the warrant.
Oh, that's right, that's the one that needs to go on as its own article.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Scratch that. Okay, any motions relative to the regional school for turf, track, and fencing?
Move to put it on the warrant.
As a standalone.
As a standalone article.
Yes.
It is on the warrant, it's a standalone article.
No, that's the, that's the sort of new proposed draft. We need to make that real.
Oh, I see.
I think the whole thing is on there. I get when the whole thing versus just the, okay, I get it, I get it. First of all, standalone. I am, so when it's just the block highlighted, that means like we just haven't voted on it and nothing's changing. But when the whole thing is highlighted, it means something is changing.
Do something about it, yeah.
Taken away or put on or whatever.
That I need a second.
Oh, a second.
I'm not going to collect the vote in a second. I'm wondering, I guess it makes sense where it is. I'll consider moving it back later on the agenda, but I won't. Okay, all in favor?
Well, actually, can I clarify the vote? Eric, please, before we vote?
Sure, so if you look on the handout or the background material, on the checklist, item 11 is basically being added. I believe it was under the general capital. But because it is regional and actually references the intemisal agreement, the recommendation is that it actually be pulled out of general capital and put as a standalone article by itself.
Yes, but are we voting to support this article or just voting to add it to the warrant?
Just adding it.
Just adding it to the warrant.
Okay, that's
The vote to support will be at the site on Saturday.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm that.
Nope, that's cool. How do you vote, though?
I vote aye.
Okay, and Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
I got your vote, didn't I?
Yeah, I'll say aye again.
And aye might as well. Okay, I'll check that one off now.
And then we have Article 15, which I will delete from the warrant.
Yeah, it looks like the former 15, it looks like it was the property tax exemption. It's being proposed or removed. Assessor basically requesting its removal?
The Board of Assessors is requesting this removal.
Okay. That's right. The former Board of Assessors. All right. Any motions relative to removal of this article?
I think he already moved it.
I did, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Okay, now we get to some more meat and potatoes stuff. I think Marion, you had some concerns about Article, listing her as 17, it might be something else there about the miscellaneous zoning bylaw updates. I think some of us were supporting it, but you had some concerns, you were going to touch base with Heidi, I think?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Heidi about it. Basically, my concern is it's on page, let me find it.
Page six. It starts on page five.
Oh, I don't have concern with this. It's the later one from planning board, sorry. Okay. It's not Article 18 or 17.
Yeah, I'm just going to say the one that says miscellaneous zoning bylaw updates because the numbers, they move around. They're, they're in flux. It's listed as 17 in the background material that we have here.
Right, yeah, my issue is not with 17.
Okay, so so I don't, I think you're the only one. Was there any other reason that we had actually deferred this from two weeks ago?
No, so I moved, we support it.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
You guys are going to miss me this chair. All right. Sorry, I had too much fun on my way out. Number 20, MBTA 3A zoning. That is one that I followed a bit, and I think Marion has followed a fair amount of it. I gave my little speech last time about it. If you need to hear my speech again, I'll gladly give it.
Excuse me, Article 19?
Here, it's listed 20 in the background material that I have, MBTA 3A zoning.
But Article 19, amend zoning bylaws, ADU regulations?
Yeah, we voted on February 20th to support that.
Okay.
I'm going through my notes here.
Yeah, I have a wording change that they, they should make.
Have you told that to them already?
Nope, because I only saw it today. I was at their meeting where they discussed it. And one of the things that they discussed is not clearly down here. It's just, it's a typo, I think. It's on page 14, the protected use accessory dwelling units. They need to state in there somewhere, they refer to the state, the new state law, Chapter 48, Section 3, that talks about the, the characteristics of the, the protected use ADUs. But those are limited to 900 square feet and below. And there's nowhere in here that they say 900 square feet or below. And I think they just, it's in the state law, but I think they have to say it here.
Okay.
So that's an excellent amendment, but the problem is they, not only have already held their public hearing.
Yeah.
They have.
They did.
As, as is, so that for us to change the warrant at this point isn't the way it has to go. It has to become an amendment from the planning board.
Right.
And we're about to issue this warrant. I hope at the close of this meeting, we actually issue a warrant so that the advisory board has a warrant to hold a hearing on it. Because otherwise, there's no warrant for them to hold a hearing.
Right, so it would have to be an amendment on the floor at town meeting.
Could advisory make the amendment in their motion?
Yes.
Heidi and Eddie may or
They'll make it in their motion.
Yeah, and Heidi has her hand up and has a thumbs up.
Oh, Heidi's there, Heidi, okay. Let's hear from Heidi.
Yes, Heidi, please, go ahead.
So I have a question. The Mass General Law actually references that number. So by us referencing the Mass General Law, why isn't that then adding the 900?
It's valid if it goes to court. But my point is that in our bylaws, they should be at least minimally understandable as written. And someone reading our bylaws shouldn't have to go to the, to state law in order to figure out what's being said here. That is, it's just a small thing. Because in the paragraph four, you reference the special, the special permit accessory ADUs as being up to 1,200 square feet. In the protected use ADUs, you never say a size. And I know it's in state law, for sure. But, you know, wouldn't it be better for the point of usefulness of the bylaws to have the 900 square feet limit right there? It's like adding two words.
Right, and I guess we put it in our PowerPoint presentation with the graphs. But we, we also figure that this is round one of the ADU because the state just issued their model bylaw language last week, or the EO HLC. And then we know this is evolving and changing. And they don't even have the final regulations out. That's not going to be until second week in April, I think. So unfortunately for us, the timing was, we tried to put something out, knowing that next year at town meeting, there's probably going to be some changes on ADUs that we have to amend.
I totally agree, I understand. But, you know, you want people to understand this at town meeting.
Yeah, no, and our presentation addresses the 900 and the 1,200. But I guess we thought that referring to the state law would cover us in case the state changed it, you know, in our time. But
That's kind of my thought. If the state changes things, if you're going to go through something like construct an ADU, you'd probably either be savvy in this or hire someone that's savvy. If you're going to construct a, you know, 500 to million-dollar building structure on your property that, you know, do you need it spelled out in a local bylaw? Do you know, realistically?
Well, you know, it, it's, it's kind of a major point about the protected use ADU. It, it, it's of a size that's smaller than the ones that we, that you can get by special permit. And, you know, it is, they may change the number, but just
Yeah.
to allow people to understand this as written now, it would be great to add 900 square feet.
I, I guess if someone wants to amend it on the floor, they can, I guess. But we felt, I, I felt it covered it enough for our first year.
Okay.
We'll go with how, whatever you work.
Yeah, so, so go with it.
Like Paul said, if you amend it, and that's interesting. I didn't know that they were revising it again at the state level or whatever, that maybe after, or the model bylaw came out, then might vote on something different a year from now, but it is what we asked.
Yeah, that may be, it's just, it's nice for people to be able to understand what's written.
This is an area that got a yellow block to it. Are we going to support it or not support it?
Well, so we did support it. So I guess, Marion, I'm asking you, do you want to reopen the vote to support this or not? So we did vote to support it. Or are you satisfied that our, the intent of our, to vote is good enough, at least until?
It's fine.
Okay, okay. We can't discuss anything on here. I was staying focused on the highlights, but if someone has a question about something, I don't want to, I don't stifle it. So moving on from that, let's bring it back to the MBTA 3A zoning. I can't remember why we didn't vote on this. I know, this is something, I will give my quick little speech on it, where I think it's pretty much as well-done as it can be done. Really, I mean, it's a difficult thing, it's controversial overall. Sherburne's under, I forgot if I was, it's like under 5,000. So we're given some pretty good relief. And also, we still have to comply with septic issues on there. So I think, you know, we're not, I don't think it's like, you know, this unfunded mandate that the, that other towns are facing on this here. You know, some people wanted to zone an already-developed area, which, you know, some say it doesn't pass a straight face test on, on what the intent is here. We basically are zoning about 20% more than required. We're required to do five acres, winning six acres on the town line at the closest point to a commuter rail station in the town. So I think it's going to stand up to scrutiny. I had some questions about it myself, but I, I see the planning board vetted it really well. They had public hearings, they had a townwide survey done, they got a fair amount of response to it. So I intend to support this. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments relative to it.
Just if I could add to that, that the state auditor has determined that these are an unfunded mandate. And some of the towns that I serve as town council have asked us to prepare litigation to pursue that, to see if they can get the courts to enforce that unfunded mandate and put an end to the requirement to do this, this zoning. That's just sort of background, that the, more litigation is going to occur on this. Others at least, seven communities going to be filing.
So I was reading about that last week. What really the odds of that? And we have like the Quinn bill, we have 40B. We have a number of unfunded mandates that have come down. I mean, is there really, is that really basis to, you know, win at court on something like this? Are we just going to put off? Because I think what we have here is not going to be too impactful to the town. I, that's just my gut on this. Multifamily housing that has to have septic within a six-acre zoned area. Do you think there actually is, I maybe don't want to say it, but, you know, there've been so many unfunded mandates over the years, why is this one different than the others?
Such to extent that, that I and my firm have been hired by towns to pursue this, I'm certainly not going to say that it's unlikely of success. We will make it likely to succeed. That's what we're being hired to do. I only mention that as background so that you understand the full context of what's going on with MBTA zoning. And as I mentioned before, we also have a home rule petition to exempt the town from the MBTA zoning that has never been filed with this general court. So there are a number of alternatives that the town has. But in the meantime, shouldn't we be doing something? So even if litigation is pursued by other communities and they win, which might have effect on us, there's, there's nothing to be lost by not doing the MBTA zoning requirements. And if we have to do those requirements and the planning board's done all this work, why? I have, we don't, we haven't supported it. So why, why not at least go forward with that? We can do all these things at the same time. We can see how the other communities do with their lawsuit. We can file a home rule petition because the voters have already voted for it. And we can pursue the MBTA zoning, so they're not exclusive.
But you said that nothing's to be lost by not going for it. I thought state funding would be lost. In fact, I thought recently they're talking even Chapter 70, whether that was an open, whether that was a hollow threat or not, I'm not sure. Is really nothing?
Nothing to be lost by, by voting for this article.
Okay.
Which is what
No, I thought it meant nothing to be lost by not voting or not supporting it.
No, 20.
20, because it changed the numbering on me. But there's nothing, there's nothing to be lost for the town of Sherburne to also pursue this article.
And a home rule petition at the same, simultaneously.
You can do the home rule petition at the same time, or, and we can see how the litigations go.
Okay, there's a bit of information. All right, are there any other question, the comments relative to the 3A zoning? I get your point. Yeah, Heidi?
Thank you. So the reason you didn't vote was because Marion had some questions the last time. So she and I sat down and went over the questions that she had on this article. And I think we kind of solved the questions. But my pitch on this to the town is going to be, we do have a fair amount of money to lose. There's, over all the different grants in the last five years, federal and state, we've got $3.2 million. We don't know exactly which ones, if it's going to be all the grants, it's probably not yet. But they're going to keep adding which ones they're going to pull. So for us, there's an economic consequence by not voting this. If the towns become successful in lawsuits, we can join the bandwagon next year and revote the zoning. We don't, you know, it's one thing with zoning, we can revote it. But I would really hate to see the town pay an economic price and not approve this.
I agree.
Yeah, that's why I said we can do all, do all three at the same time.
Okay, so it sounds like the issues were clarified with Marion. Do I have any further questions or motions relative to this warrant article?
Move to support it.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Okay. Well, that took care of at least the residual items that we had not, that we had left over from a couple of weeks ago.
No, I have that.
I was going to say, I was going to say, are there any, are there, are there any other open items relative or anything else relative to the warrant as a whole?
So I, I've been urging the board to put on the warrant, an article that would give some financial support to veterans in this community. And in support thereof, I would say that we have been making efforts. This board has been making efforts, this, this town government is making efforts to make this community more friendly to veterans. We have done things like organize Memorial Day events that have veterans participating in it. So we moved it from a Boy Scout thing to a veteran's thing. We've created the Veterans Day event. And here is a, a community that has not adopted all of available exemptions that could be given to veterans. The, the proposal here is a pretty simple one. It's not expensive. The the proposal here is a pretty simple one. It's not expensive at all. At least not in the in the the near term, longer term. It's it's gonna add a consumer price index increase to a benefit that started at four hundred, then went to eight hundred dollars. So that every every year, that number would be increased by the C P I. And again, over over the long term, that will have a benefit to our veterans. So it's the last time we brought this thing up, people were saying, we don't know how the veterans' benefits work. We don't understand the role of the board assessors and all of that. And thanks to Jeremy, he prepared all this material. Talked to some veterans agents. And has distributed that to everyone here. It's essentially a no brainer, again, because it costs very little. I think the the quick and dirty calculation I did is gonna be less than five hundred dollars for the upcoming year. And it's more important, I think, to send the message that we do honor and respect veterans. And we do understand the price that they pay. So let's give them this this thing. And it isn't a big deal. I mean, I've heard, oh gee, it's gonna be some work to put it on the warrant. Well, it's only five lines. I submitted a draft article that came from other veterans agents that they had put together. It's only five lines. It essentially has, as I said, no financial impact on the overall position of the town. And it's meaningful to the veterans that we have in this community. For all those reasons, to me, it's a no brainer. We should care for that.
All right. Do you have any, yeah, go ahead, Marion.
Are you proposing the language that it's is at the end of this long? There there is some suggested article language at the end of that long thing that is included in the packet?
I believe that's the case. I think it's the same personal language that Paul suggested earlier.
Right.
Claws I.
Just for clause I, yes.
Just for clause I?
So it's on page two of one of the things that Jeremy had provided.
I think it's.
Claws?
In the bulletin by.
Oh, twenty-two I.
The Division of Local Services bulletin, page three.
On page three, at the bottom of the page. And which of those two?
Only I.
Are you suggesting?
Twenty-two I.
So basically, would this wording be the town meeting article?
Correct.
Mm hmm. And what percentage are you suggesting?
Percentage gets determined annually.
Oh, I see.
By the local services.
Oh, okay. All right.
So it's 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 like social security. Every year, social security gets increased, but it's done by the government, not by the town. Right now, the.
What you say with the current federal administration, Paul, but yes, I agree.
All right, so I guess someone help me out here. Would this language just go straight in as is, except for like, would it be more to it? You know, usually I have something a little bit like a proposed article language. Does anyone know anything more about this that can add to this?
Well, I I had sent by email a proposed article. This one has a blank for the fiscal year. So the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five is the blank on the sample acceptance vote.
All right. So any of the board members give me a thoughts.
Are you, Paul, are you gonna present this on Saturday, and are you gonna present it at the town meeting?
I would do that, yes, with Jeremy's help. And hopefully, our veterans agent would be available.
I mean, I I have to say again, not to keep on hitting the refrain of back when I was the advisory chair. Nothing, nothing, literally nothing annoyed me more than last minute additions to the warrant. I just, I mean, almost my my reflex is just to say, no, why are you adding this two days before my hearing?
But this I brought up six weeks ago.
Did you bring it up to advisory?
I sent the copy of the word to advisor.
Yeah, please, Dan.
So advisory has not considered this. We've had a very full agenda this year, so it will be confusing and challenging for advisory on Saturday to hear the three days prior. There was a new warrant article which we haven't had a chance to discuss. I'm quite sympathetic to the intent of the article and, you know, indexing by C P I for these benefits. To me, it seems like a very sensible thing to do. I think in terms of process, there will be a lot of questions. There'll be a lot of questions because people haven't seen it.
Yeah.
They won't understand the context, the background. I could easily see us spending an hour discussing this on Saturday and.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
You know, I think this is a a really good thing to add to our bylaws, absolutely. And I'm glad you brought it, brought it up. I wasn't aware of it at all. But I'd hate to see it shot down by advisory and town meeting. And I would rather, you know, even though our veterans would lose this benefit for one year, I'd much rather see 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 it brought next year where we could all, you know, help to inform the public and help to bring it forward in a way that would surely pass. And I just would not like to see it fail, so I would be worried about doing it this year.
My response to that is that there are some veterans in town who are hurting. And while this is small for us in terms of dollars, it's a lot for them. And I I would imagine that all the members of the board know some of these people. And some of them are in pretty tough shape. And and to put it off for a year because it might take some explaining. I'm I'm willing to do the explaining. It's just sometimes you need to be charitable to people.
Oh, I totally agree.
You need to show that you care, that this is sort of being a community. We're we're all in this community together. We need to help each other. And and this is essentially when you understand it, it's a no brainer.
Oh, it is a no brainer. I totally agree. Is there some other way that the veterans could be supported through some other channel up until the time that this is passed, if we put it off for a year?
I mean, we have a tax aid relief fund, right? And I think anybody who is hurting enough that you're saying that you calculated it out and the total cost would be something like five hundred dollars. I think we have more than that in the tax aid relief fund. And anybody for whom they're in such dire financial straits, I think very much so should apply for tax aid relief.
Well, you you don't understand human pride. I mean, that's probably too harsh to say that. I mean, these are people who have given their lives, sometimes are missing parts of their body for all of us. And often, they don't want charity. It's the recognition. It's the appreciation. It's the it there's a there's a whole dynamic here in dealing with veterans.
Do you think you, I want, do you think you can, on Saturday, can you explain it concisely with the numbers? Because there is a time consideration. If you spend a long time explaining it, they will shoot it down because they don't wanna go on. Do you think you can either make a little, I don't know, handout about it, reach out to people you know at advisory? I'm not trying to be obvious. I'm actually serious about this. Is there any way that you can you can advocate for this in a very concise, effective manner on Saturday?
I don't know if I'm ever concise.
Nah, that's kind of my point. I go.
Yeah. And the problem is that advisory is not gonna be concise, right? It's gonna be nine people, several of whom are opinionated and talkative, and they're gonna need to discuss it. And at least half of that discussion is not gonna be substantive, but more about process and about how inappropriate it is to even be doing this right now. Again, it's gonna be a waste of time and, I mean.
It's about caring for people.
I.
Of course.
I I just, I think that, I think you put this on the next town meeting warrant. Let's, yeah.
Well, I I understand that argument. I respect that argument, but I think somebody needs to speak up for our veterans.
I'd like to, I'd like to see it like in January or in December, on the warrant, spelled out, when it's kind of on there. You know, I would obviously, I'm almost fifty fifty. If I hate to say this, but if someone could actually explain it to advisory concisely and clearly, go right to the dollar amounts, but how many meetings have you had about the warrant so far?
We've met since, I think, January eighth, every week, but one, two, but every week but two, and we've had meetings that have gone till midnight, so.
All right.
You know, there's no way this is gonna be a short discussion.
Yeah.
Again, I'm very sympathetic.
Yeah.
To Paul's message.
Yeah.
And I just think on process, it will.
And and it would be irresponsible of advisory to simply rubber stamp it through when they haven't seen it yet. They, I just, they're obligated to look about, look at it, talk about it, ask questions, think about it. And at at minimum, you're talking about an hour there.
It could, it could hurt it in the long run. It absolutely could hurt in the long run. Paul, my last, my last plea to you, Paul, is do you know a handful of people at advisory you could actually reach out to and call, like, maybe four of them and say, and have and kind of head this off before it comes to the conversation?
I I don't know who's on advisory.
Yeah. That's the only other way I see this happening, is someone made a plea out, made individual calls to each member advisory, someone not on advisory, obviously. And then did something like that. Short of that, I I think this is gonna do more harm than good to the long term nature of this article. Any other thoughts?
I I completely concur with what you just said. You know, if it somehow gets voted down because it was last minute, it may never happen the following year because they, you know, feel like we're running up the flagpole again.
We have a lot of new members at advisory, so they're gonna probably be on for a while. We're gonna have this, advisory's gonna look like this for a few years.
Exactly.
All right. I'm gonna go to the, unless someone makes a motion in a second, I'm gonna probably move on with this one here, as much as I I don't want to. I think it's the right thing to do in the long run, and go on to the next agenda item. And I applaud you, Paul, for sending this. I really do, and for advocating for this. And if there's a special this year, I don't know if there's any thoughts, is there any reason to be a special this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Anything for that thing I was staying off of? Is there anything about that? The street or anything like that? Okay. I never know. I know nothing about it. If it pops up a special, you know what I mean? All right. I'm sorry, Paul. It does look like that we're probably going to, um, address this next year at the next town meeting when available. Okay. All right.
I move to close the warrant.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, wait, wait.
Dan?
Dan has.
Just circling back to revolving funds, if you're willing to.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. You sent an email about it. That's right. What article number is that, actually? Six. Thank you for being here. There it is. It's even highlighted. I blew right past it. So Article six revolving fund. I may ask Dan to speak a little bit. I have your email printed up somewhere in my mess here. But some thoughts on take parks and recreation. There are two hundred fifty thousand dollar proposed limit and reduced down to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which I guess it was before. I guess, Dan, do you mind speaking this a little bit on discussion at advisory?
Yeah, so I I don't know if Dave, well, still I might be, but so here here's what came up at the last advisory meeting. So rec commission got a bit in arrears on collecting field rental fees. I think it's now sixty thousand that they still have to collect. A few weeks ago, it was as much as ninety thousand that they still had to collect. And even with not, even with those funds not coming in, they still had sufficient resources to cover all of their expenses. So effectively, that means their operating budget was larger than it needed to be to cover their expenses, given what would have been in the revolving fund had they collected all of these. So I think Dave's been working very diligently to get these collected and brought in, so I think the funds mostly will come in. And that means that their revolving fund is going to get to be very large. So advisory was trying to think about, well, how might that be rebalanced? And remembering that back to prior to the twenty nineteen town meeting, excess funds in in rec commission's revolving fund automatically revert to the town's general fund. That's not the case anymore. Now, excess funds roll over from one year to the next. So given that, they look to be on track of a very large sum in their in their revolving fund. So advisory, again, was trying to think about how might that be rebalanced? One possibility would be to reduce their operating budget or operating budget for a year. That seemed a little complicated because there could be a big drop and then next year a big increase. Another thought, which is the preferred thought of advisory, was to reduce the spending limit on the revolving fund down to a hundred and fifty thousand. Continue with the proposed operating budget, a hundred and fifty thousand. So that would leave them with three hundred thousand to spend in F Y twenty-six, which would more than cover expenses, given how expenses have been running in recent years. And then next year, if there's a capital project, that capital project could go forward, and hopefully the rec commission would be willing to draw a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand, whatever the right number is, out of the revolving fund. And it seems like that might be a clean, relatively elegant way to kind of rebalance things. And by putting a limit on it, just by reducing the limit on the revolving fund, the spending limit from two fifty to one fifty, it just ensures that those resources don't go somewhere else. They stay in the revolving fund. And then a year from now, if it's, if the cap, if the tennis courts don't happen this year and they happen next year, then some of that could be financed out of the revolving fund, and that would bring everything back into balance without having wild swings in their operating budget. So that was, that was the thought. And so the hope of advisory was that that spending limit per parks and rec could be dropped to a hundred fifty K this year, and next year, if appropriate, it could go back up.
All right. Any thoughts on that?
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
If anybody is concerned that, well, what happens if something unanticipated happens and they suddenly have a very large expense? The regs governing the revolving fund indicate that jointly the select board and advisory can know at the year or change that number. So there is a relief valve.
Okay.
Should some unanticipated thing occur during the year.
And that would have to come from the reserve fund, though, right?
Uh, no, no.
It'd come from the revolving fund.
Uh, partway through the year, if 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 it were necessary, the select board and and advisory could raise that spending limit from the revolving fund, and then they could spend them that ex, that excess, the excess dollars that were in the revolving fund, they could spend those. So there's a relief valve. You know, for any, something happens and their expenses are much more than they've been in recent years, there's a relief valve that would let them spend more out of the revolving fund if they needed to.
Dan, could you clarify something for me? Is there some other reason to to do this besides just sort of some sort of imposing some sort of fiscal discipline on the use of the funds?
I think I think the the way I would put it is, it's it's thinking, they're gonna end up with more money than they need. And so I was trying to think about what's the best strategy for rebalancing? And effectively, their their operating budget has been larger than it needed to be. So what's the best way to rebalance and get some of those resources back into the general fund or back devoted to a capital project? So it does, as you said, impose some discipline to put some limit on what they can spend. And that essentially would ensure that a year from now, there might be a hundred thousand dollars that could be allocated to a capital project.
Could we hear from from the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yeah, is, um.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, well, in case he's not on, um, what was their feedback when, did they, were Parks and Rec present at your discussion of this?
They weren't, and so I can't actually offer a lot of feedback from them. Um, they're in a, you know, they're in a transition, there're gonna be two new members. Um, I've been in touch with Jim Drews, um, who's the one continuing member. I highlighted for him this point about the excess funds that are going to appear. And we talked about a number of different ways that that might be, might be managed with adjusting the operating fund, uh, their operating budget, or, 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 or some, some other, some other mechanism. Um, it's been hard to really get focus on this. Um, and so I don't have a lot to offer on, you know, what was their, you know, what was their, what was their reaction? How did they like to proceed? I think it would leave them in a very secure spot, in that they would have thirty thousand dollars of resources for FY twenty-six.
And it is a new group. It's essentially a new committee, we have like, you know, two new members, like committee of three, maybe it is kind of wise to do this for year one. And like I said, maybe next year, bring, put it back up to two fifty, cause essentially gonna have three hundred.
Right.
I don't mind doing it, even, even in the vacuum without their input, cause it, it does seem to make sense, at least in the, for a one-year term.
So the excess, I, I'm not sure I understand, the excess goes to the general fund, or it goes?
It goes into the revolving fund.
It would remain in the revolving fund.
Oh, it remains in the revolving fund, okay.
With the thought that it could be devoted to, say, a capital project next year, coming out of the revolving fund.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is not, this is not pulling money out of the revolving fund, it remains in the revolving fund, it just puts a limit on.
It like puts a, a, a sub-fund in the revolving fund that could be called capital or future.
Like a, like a credit line.
Yeah, okay.
Even though it's a new committee, I just believe in more collaboration and, even more cooperation. And even though there may be new members, for new members to come on and then suddenly have this thing hit them. They might feel, uh, that they're being taken advantage of because they're new members and they don't know. Or didn't do something that they should have done, or whatever. Just, government works better when people talk and communicate and stuff.
So, so I agree with you, communication has been challenging. Uh, again, cause I think folks are busy, I think, uh, the prior chair, who's since resigned, handled a lot of the budget stuff. So communication has been challenging, and I completely agree with, with the point. Um, I don't think this, uh, I don't think this, um, you know, particularly constrains them or binds them. Because again, you know, their typical spending rate in a year is two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And they would have three hundred thousand of dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand from the revolving fund, a hundred and fifty thousand from the proposed operating budget. They would have three hundred thousand spend in fiscal twenty-six. And if for any reason they needed more than that, they could come to the Select Board and Advisory and say, hey, you know, hey, this thing happened, we need an extra thirty thousand dollars. Can you put the spending limit on the revolving fund back up?
What about all those big projects, if they're doing, uh, recreation project? What, do we know what the status of that is?
Uh, yeah, they were prepared to come and report on the status of the ARPA projects. I think that's under your next meeting, I think, if you're in February third meeting.
That's right, deferred from today, okay. It was one fifty a while ago. How long ago was it, one fifty? I remember, I thought it was one fifty a while ago.
I mean, it was during my time on Advisory that we did the whole change to Parks and Rec, so.
And we ended up on double the year post, uh, when we shot down the, um.
The, the turf field.
The turf field.
Yeah.
The operating budget and the.
That was in the garage too, that was like, uh, was that two thousand, thousand one, something like that?
Yeah.
Did we do two garages?
What's that?
Do we do two, um, town meetings or just one?
One, I think.
Was it twenty?
One garage.
Yeah, twenty twenty?
Well, we did two with the garage.
What's that?
We did two meetings at the garage.
That's what I thought, we did two town meetings at the garage, yeah, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so it's been three.
Yeah, for sure, and the previous one we did in July.
It's been three, four years or so that they've had the higher limit. And again, the.
But they're not money.
Right, the, the whole point of the higher limit wasn't for them, to allow them to spend more money, it was to allow them actually to, um, save up money.
Save money.
Um, and then potentially spend it on larger projects as they happened.
And, and that can still happen here.
Yeah.
Oh, so, so what's, what's, what's currently held in the, in the revolving fund right now? How much, how much is in it?
It's about a hundred and twenty, something like that.
I misunderstood this, you're right, this is a limit of what can actually go into the revolving fund.
No, no, it's how mu- what can come out. So the idea is that they could just, uh, let's say that they collect two hundred thousand dollars in receipts every year. They could choose to only spend a hundred and fifty thousand and then just save that fifty grand. And they might do that for five years in a row to build up a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, account. That they could then spend on, uh, a capital project, basically.
Yep, I get that.
And they can do it now because of the two fifty limit?
No, they can do it now. They couldn't do it before because any excess funds that they didn't spend at the end of the year would then just go into the general fund. So there was no mechanism for the Rec Commission to basically save up money for a project three, four, five years down the line.
So they do have that mechanism now?
They do now, yes.
Well, I don't, I guess I'm missing something.
So I think the idea.
I don't see, uh, why this proposal is important.
So I, I think there's maybe three things that happened at that, that time. Uh, you added, uh, a budget, in the operating budget, a hundred and fifty thousand. You increased the spending limit for revolving fund. And you also, um, did away with the idea of reducing the revolving fund down to, uh, this balance and having it cash out to the general fund. So that, that doesn't happen anymore, that, that doesn't get cashed out as it did before, so it all stays in the revolving fund, building up balance. So there, I think there are three things that had been, that changed at about that same time. It had been tradition that, or, or, not tradition, but the, the mechanism was that at town meeting or after the end of the fiscal year. It was like an adjustment or closeout of revolving fund for Rec.
Right, yeah, I understand that part of it.
Let's see what Sean has to say.
I like this, and I, I don't know how that's would work for any of the others, but if you think of it like this, that they're, they're doing their daily operations with the revolving fund. So you're not limiting that, cause they're not spending that. And it's perfectly reasonable to think that they should need to, if they're gonna cash out a hundred thousand dollars out of that to do something. You should have a vote on that, right? There should be some other oversight rather than three commissioners doing that. Cause town meeting won't have voted on it or anything else, so.
Oh, I get it.
And that maybe will happen in a couple of weeks, because the ARPA's, you know, when they give the ARPA update, they maybe will need to use, they probably are gonna need to use some of that revolving fund. So, it's reasonable that the two committees should, should vote on that.
So Dan, forget Advisory, what are your thoughts on it?
So very much as Sean said, I think this is a, this is a way of, so, so let me back up. That C-FR did a projection of balances in the revolving fund. And on the assumption that they do manage to collect the arrears, uh, field grounds, which actually went back to twenty twenty-three, so they were pretty far behind on collecting those. Assuming they do collect those, they get a hundred and fifty thousand, um, operating budget allocation, which would cover a lot of their expenses. They get additional revenue from field rental this season. At the end of fiscal twenty-six, they would have something like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the revolving fund. You know, rough, rough estimate, could be more, could be less, hard to do those kinds of forecasts. That's all, that's a significant chunk of money. Um, and it's so large, in part because they were arrears on collecting rental fees, which only got discovered recently. Um, and so suddenly there's this big chunk of money from these arrears rental fees that's gonna come in. So very much as Sean said, if there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, in that revolving fund, they're not gonna need all that for their just ongoing operations. It would be something to be used for a big project, and very much as Sean said, it just broadens the oversight responsibility for what that might be. By having Select Board and Advisory having a role in making that decision, rather than just the Rec Commissioners. Again, Commission in transition, two new members, the Rec Commission independently making a decision about how to spend that. It can still be spent, they would just need, need to come to Select Board and to Advisory and, and, and make the case.
I, I'm willing to support it. I, I, I understand what Paul said, and I appreciate what he said there. Two new members, one they might not even know, but I mean, either way, I had two new members, I think it's reasonable, and then, you know, see how it goes, and then maybe. Is it next year, when they have the other hundred and fifty that's been, those. I'm willing to support this. What are other people's thoughts on this? Do I have any motions relative to this?
So I have a thought, which is, uh, why do we have to decide this tonight?
These warrants open right now, and it's one chance to edit it.
I think this num- this number can also be, this can also be edited, uh, after the fact.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Can we?
It's below the line, it's not part of any warrant.
But I think part of it is also that we have voted already to support the revolving funds at their published numbers. And now.
That's true, we did.
Advisory wants to change the number, so effectively, I think Dan is asking for our, uh, renewed support of this article with a different number.
With the one fifty, yeah, I get it. Alright. How about that? Do I have any motions relative to support this, uh, article with the one fifty?
The point I was trying to make is that, that. I don't see why this has to be done tonight, and I would like to give an opportunity for, um, to hear what Recreation Commission says at the hearing, uh, uh, two days from now. I'd also wanna see what happens in, in, in a week or two, when they come and give a report on Laurel Fields and what they need and what they're planning to spend and so on. And we have all the way until town meeting to actually to decide what that number's gonna be. Doesn't have to be.
But I don't think we're deciding the number, we're just voting somewhat performatively to support.
So why, why don't we u- undo our support of the two fifty and just leave it at that? And then let's play it by ear.
So, so what would that mean? The warrant would show a question mark for that number?
Uh, I mean, it means going to Saturday, and he, I think he's doing the same thing, he's deferring the two fifty to Saturday.
So do you want us to hold a Select Board vote on Saturday regarding this revolving fund?
So this number isn't, isn't really part of the warrant, cause it's below the line?
But it's still a subject on Saturday's hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a subject for, for, so we need to issue the warrant, we should issue the warrant. The, the question is, what number goes into below the line? And that's just for information purposes? I don't see why we have to make a change on that or make a decision on that, or even if we just leave that number blank for the time being.
But isn't that kind of the same as every capital item? They're also all below the line, but we have voted each.
Which we support, which we don't.
Yeah.
It is, Dan, you have an embrace?
So, so I'm, I'm given, Advisory obviously has a photo, and I understand that will happen on Saturday. Um, I'm pretty confident that Advisory, you know, feels pretty strongly about the one fifty, so that's where Advisory is gonna land. Um, and I think, you know, I don't know if Advisory lands there and Select Board lands a, a different number. I don't know exactly what the process is going forward at town meeting, presumably Advisory makes the motions at town meeting. I don't, it just, it seems like holding it open is gonna create some, you know, process.
It sounds like, yeah, I'd best have a split vote going into Advisory, that makes a difference or anything else. So, when, when.
And I think that, I think the number is Advisory's to set, right?
Yeah.
Cause Advisory's gonna make the motion.
Right.
At town meeting.
So regardless of what the warrant looks like going into Advisory, Advisory's gonna set the number. They set the number for every single revolving fund.
And one of the things, I know there's diversity of opinions on Advisory, I did call it, Dan, personally, cause I actually like his opinion, respect his opinion a lot, obviously, I know, whatever. Um, so I'm willing to actually go forward to one fifty on this. I understand might be rubbing some people, but I just don't think it's a case with a, with a new board on there. I'll be interested to see, in fact, if the Rec Commission comes before us on Saturday, gives a compelling evidence not to do that, we could reconsider our vote. And I think that's been done before, but, um, I'd be willing to entertain a motion at just a one fifty, I do support it. Um, I trust, um, Dan quite a bit with this, and I, I believe in his, his argument behind this. Um, it looks like it'll probably be a split vote, but does anyone have any motions relative to making this one fifty?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm, I move to reduce the Parks and Recreation, uh, revolving fund spending limit to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You've moved to support it, I guess.
I, uh, okay, yeah, I moved to support, reducing it to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah.
Uh, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'd second it.
Okay, all favor, um.
Just in the discussion?
Oh, yeah, sure, for the discussion, absolutely.
Uh, I, I'm gonna vote no, because I, I value the collaboration between committees. And the need for communication more than whether this number's one fifty or two fifty.
Listen, I appreciate that, I do, I think there's a certain circumstance, and I, I do appreciate what you say, no question about it.
And, and with them coming before us with something that we don't know what they're gonna say. And with them not being heard and not, haven't been effective communications, I just think it's a bad idea. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote no, but that doesn't mean I don't have great respect for Dan, cause you said you were gonna vote for it because you have great respect for Dan, I have great respect for Dan. But, and, and, and not gonna vote for it.
I think we're close on the same page, you and I, on this one, but I just think it's, it does teeter on either side, that's all.
Right, Dan, has this been discussed with Rec at Advisory?
It has not.
Okay.
This just came up, this came up at like eleven thirty last Wednesday night. They're having a general discussion about outstanding budget issues, and, you know, nobody from Rec was, was there. I, as, as I said, I've had some communication with Jim Drews, but, uh, have not yet connected with him to have a serious conversation about this.
For my days on Advisory, we tried not to ambush people, and we tried to work with them, and we're all part of the same government.
So, so we've, we've tried, it hasn't, it hasn't been easy going.
I understand, I'm not following anybody, I'm just saying, we all need to work together, all the boards of town.
I just don't think the Rec Commission is, is what you, I think it's not a solid thing right now, I think it's highly, highly in flux. And maybe it needs some guidance from us at that point. I wouldn't say we're ambushing anyone by, by doing this, I think we're.
Cause honestly, at least, I'm taking what Dan says at face value, cause I don't know the numbers behind it. But we're not actually constraining their ability to do their usual business in fiscal twenty-six. They have got all of the leeway to spend their typical amount that they spend. And I think all we're doing is putting in some fairly light guardrails on what they could do in one or two years. And the reasoning behind it is because of the fact that they are in arrears, uh, in collecting their receipts. And the amount of money that we're reducing their spend limit by approximately matches the amount of money that they are in arrears. Um, and so, again, I, I don't believe that anybody coming in is gonna be like, you can't handcuff me like this. It's like, uh, you basically have the ability to do everything that you were probably going to do anyways. Um, so I don't know, is that a, is that a fair characterization of the situation, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we do have a motion in a second on the floor, we've had further discussion, I'm gonna collect the vote. Um, say, all favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye, okay, forward. So, uh, motions relative to closing the warrant.
So if we hear an Advisory something that changes our minds, we can change our minds.
We can change our minds.
Yep.
I will, I will try again before Saturday to reach out to folks on the Rec Commission and share, you know, share this with them. Um, and, you know, if, if Dave wants to, he'd be there to make his presentation on the tennis courts, I will do my best to reach out to him and, you know. He may say something that changes Advisory's position on this.
Yeah.
Until, until then, I trust your judgment.
In some ways, I think it's actually good that they're new members, cause this will cause them to take a second look or a first, a stronger first look at better understanding, you know, what's happened in the past. So it's kind of almost like a pause, I guess I would say.
Okay, so the warrant's still open, any motions relative to closing the warrant?
Closing the warrant.
Alright, uh, you can decide who's motion, who's settled that one. Alright, so, all favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Merron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am, uh, very much an aye. Let's talk ballot questions, what's in front of us here?
So there's a couple of typos.
Yeah, so this, this is the draft ballot questions. Um, you don't need to act on this tonight, this is for your information. This can be voted at the third meeting, um, at the time. The town clerk doesn't need it. I think it's, she needs to find a language by the end.
It should be voted after advisory. We sort of have a standing, longstanding rule for selecting, as had for more than a decade, that if we're gonna do any kind of operating override or debt exclusion override, it is at the request of advisory. They need to, they're the ones that initiated. We don't initiate it at our end. And for that to happen, first, advisory has to have a warrant, which they don't have yet. They get, presumably we're gonna issue this warrant tonight. Then have this warrant, they have the hearing, and at the hearing, they're going to tell us their financial plans for the town, what they're gonna be presenting to town meeting. And that's gonna include some ballot questions. And based on their request of us to have ballot questions, then I feel like I can vote for it. If they don't ask for any ballot questions, then why would we be putting ballot questions?
Did you say there were some typos here too?
Yes.
Me, if you can mark them up and just hand them straight to, um, to Jeremy and Diane. I don't think we need to have an open meeting discussion on, on typos.
Great.
So I would suggest we, we put this on for April third?
April third, yep.
So be it. All right, very good. Uh, consent agenda, as amended, removing the, um, the minutes.
The last minutes, correct.
Move approval of this consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, my only issue is that, you know, I got, uh, I need a good team to get on for trivia night because last week I was on the miscellaneous one and I didn't do that well. So if anyone's got a team going for trivia night, let me know. All right. I have a motion and a second. It's a liquor license for the trivia night. You've never been to that?
I've never.
It's in the library, it's a lot of fun. All favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Merron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Okay, how about, um, what's, what's on the next page? Is it a select board report or is it T I R's fail, which one comes first?
Any data?
Yes.
Question four. It's about funding the Department of Public. It's nice that we have a.
Don't worry, we changed some of that.
Okay, I see, right there.
When we turn this recording off, I'll tell you about a, uh, something happened. Yeah, you can see that? All right. Um, any select board updates? Okay, all good. There was a, um, a site walk for one of the forty people.
That is that the, the, uh, we're on track to get the virtual meetings continued.
That's all. Yeah, that's good.
It's on the Senate, it's gonna be passed either today or tomorrow. I haven't checked today, I was too busy.
But we've sent it to pass the same order.
Great. So then it just goes to the governor. Governor said she's gonna sign it. So we should be in business, so that we can continue our.
This is to March twenty twenty-seven, right?
Yes, it's a two-year extension.
March, right.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. How about town history updates?
Yeah, just a, a few quick updates. Uh, we're back in this room because the attic insulation is completed. That was funded by a Green Communities grant. We were able to utilize the balance, seven thousand dollars. Thanks to Sean's hard work to get this, this project done, so thank you. Another project that's completed is the EV charger outside, the fast charger. That is also operating. And in no small part from Sean's thoracic and ever-source, almost daily, to get the power hooked up. So those two projects are completed. I've got Western Ave speed feedback signs. Those materials have been delivered and will be installed, um, in the near term. I think there's two speed, two signs along with the Western Ave. Uh, so those will go live in the, in the coming weeks. Those were identified from the safety committee and some other venues to, to help with the, to traffic safety down Western Ave. And the final update I have is, it, some training has been scheduled. They've sent out to, um, to copy the select board and all of various boards and committees about ADA training. The grant that we received to do the self-assessment and transition plan is part of that. The consultant will do two different trainings. So an in-person training on April fourteenth to train folks on accessibility, you know, general accessibility. And then another training on May seventh about electronic or digital or communications type training for accessibility. So all folks are welcome to that training. Everyone a barrier. And, uh, and that'll be part of the, the, the deliverables that the consultant gives us is how we can ensure that things like our website and other materials that we publish are accessible to all and we're, you know, continue to.
Just a comment about ADA. There was an episode here in this room where fire alarms were going off and you couldn't use the elevators. There was a, a woman in a wheelchair. And everybody cleared out except for the woman in the wheelchair and, and me because I didn't want to leave her alone. And there is literally no way for her to get out. Couldn't use the elevators, couldn't really use the stairs. Supposedly there's a, a folding ladder somewhere that you can open a window and put it down. But if you're in a wheelchair, and I just was not strong enough. I didn't see myself strong enough as to carry somebody down a ladder without throwing myself in the process. I'm hoping that we address what? You can't have everybody run out of the building and abandon one person alone in a, trapped in a room, not knowing how to get out. Fortunately, it really wasn't a fire, it was a false alarm. But please, let's provide some way for the disabled person to get out of this meeting room.
All risen, a part of the consultant's, um, responsibilities is to do a facilities assessment. So they have been touring all the departments and buildings, but we can note that as well. I think that lottery references in the client, you know, backcourt in that way.
That's more forgetting up there.
Yeah, it wouldn't help.
Fire department does have keys.
I thought we saw one of them.
That they can override the, uh, you know, they can do the fire operation even if the alarm's still going off. And that's the purpose of it, so the firemen can take over. The alarm panel obviously, so they lock the door in order for debris. So it's on the proper floor away from the fire. Firemen can override that with a fire.
She was.
As fast as they can get there.
I'll, I'll ignore that.
She was terrible.
Well, well, given that it's ten ten, I think we can guarantee we weren't going to be able to get out of the room.
All right, move to adjourn then.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Eric, aye? Okay, we're good.
No, you're supposed to say me.